Geez. Because no one's gonna do it for you. Well, for you they might, but not for me.
Good afternoon. It is 2:00 on April 9th, I think.
Yes.
And we have a relatively busy agenda ahead of us, so let's get started. Do we have any board members who have a good-of-the-order item? I want to see how the conversation goes.
Yeah, me too. I'd rather wait till the end.
All right, very good. Then we'll jump right into the agenda. First item on the agenda is school board auditor position. I believe I'm turning that over to Dr. Pruitt. Yes?
Yes. Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Dode, Dr. Atkins. So, we had a good conversation the last time we were together in, relative to this issue, in which we came out of that wanting to gather more information related to moving forward on this issue. And my role in that was to continue the dialogue with the clerk of courts and ask them to provide some additional information, which I shared with you. And it was some time getting it together, so, you know, I apologize for the short notice on that. But I can pretty much, I'd like to, and they graciously agreed to be here again in case you had any specific questions. But I think the first thing is just really to acknowledge that the clerk of courts is not looking for business, okay? That they have been part of this process at the request of their supervisor, if you will, and have graciously done that. But I just really wanted to make that point, that, you know, they're not actively looking for business, but have really been to, you know, with us to provide information. And I think I can sum it up that their overall recommendation at this time would be to find sort of an outside expert, if you will, that could conduct that initial risk assessment, somebody who's done that work, is familiar with school districts. And then, once we have that, what is the scope of work? What needs to be looked at? What is that five-year plan that you need to do? Then, come back to the table. Is the clerk of courts an option at that time? Do we continue with the company or folks that did the initial assessment? Or do we, at that time, go about hiring and starting our own, you know, expanded internal audit department, if you will? So, that's kind of to just shape it for you. Any questions on that part? Because then from there, I would turn it over to Ms. Malley to kind of continue the conversation.
I have a question for Attorney Dode. Does that fulfill the requirements of the statute?
In what regard, Ms. Pedregama?
In having an internal auditor in the district on July 1st. I mean, isn't that what the statute says?
Yes.
So, that does fulfill the requirements of the statute?
If there's an internal auditor employed by the board, because I think the word "employed" is in there, and we've had our differences of discussion about that on July 1st, 2019. That's what the statute requires, yes? To perform the functions that are in that statute. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher.
So, if you hire someone as a consultant or a, or by contract, temporary contract, does that constitute employed?
Yeah. Well, I have voiced my opinion regarding that, but there are districts around the state that are fulfilling this, or school boards, I should say, fulfilling this function through a contracted firm.
Ms. Gittens.
It was my understanding from our workshop that we left with the thought that we would hire, or look into hiring, a firm that could fulfill our needs at least for six months so that we could, if we needed to or decided to, take a different turn and hire an individual or a group or whatever we wanted to do. But that we would hire a firm, we talked about in a six-month period, which, because I think we were talking about how long it might take to gear up somebody else if we did choose to go another route. So, my concern is that we need to move faster than slower with this, and that if we do have qualified recommendations that are presented to us today, that we need to not continue to just talk about it, but move on and to hire the firm that will give us what we need at least for the next six months.
I don't see qualified recommendations in front of us. If they were placed in the agenda, they were placed in there since the last time I looked at the agenda. There's new information in here that I have not been privy to until I sat down at this desk today. So, I don't feel comfortable making a decision today. I think, Dr. Pruitt, what you just said makes sense, coming from the recommendation of the only experts that have been in front of this board with regard to this position. It does make sense that we do the risk assessment and look at the breadth of what we're dealing with. I don't know how we go out to an outside contractor and say, "How will you do this work for us? How much will it cost? How long will it take?" If we don't even know what the work is. And I think that risk assessment gives us that, an idea of that. Am I getting this correctly?
I believe that they do have a presentation to that, that relates to that. Is that right, Ms. Malley?
Yes. I had been asked to provide, Dr. Pruitt had provided information on hiring or consulting with the clerk's office, and today I'm prepared to share some information with the board regarding hiring consultants to perform in a similar capacity. So, I do have some information for you to share, to share with you.
Ms. Morgan, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, Ms. Malley.
Okay. Thank you, board members. I'll go ahead and share with you, since the past two weeks, we've gathered information based on the last discussion, and I'm going to share that with you today. So, the first category of information we're going to discuss is what our peer districts are doing in response to the new legislation. And then also speak regarding external, hiring a consultant to fulfill the internal auditor function, and then give you an opportunity to have a discussion on procuring services for that. So, as we all know, the House Bill 1279 requires school districts receiving greater than $500 million in funding to employ an internal auditor by July 1st. The function reports directly to the school board and is required to perform many audit functions that are exclusive from the financial audit function that is required under statute. So, just to have that distinction between the financial requirement for an auditor and then the internal auditor is not conducting your financial audit. We reached out. We thought the top 12 school districts in terms of size would be a good candidate pool to conduct our research, and we, of course, are one of those. So, of the 11 districts that we reached out to that are the largest districts, we received feedback from nine of them, and we followed up with phone calls and additional questions. Of the nine responding to our inquiry, seven of those school districts are expanding roles and responsibilities of internal staff who perform the internal audit function. They may have consultants who complement their internal staff, but as you can see, the large number, the large majority of large school districts perform this function internally. One of the school districts indicated that they would need to hire additional staff to satisfy this, and that they would then be looking at how to delegate the roles and responsibilities with their increased staff. There is additionally another school district that has expanded the scope of the current auditor with whom they are contracted. So, that covers the school districts. Now, we'll move on to the consulting firms that we reached out to. So, we've identified eight auditing firms that support school districts in auditing functions in various capacities. I believe all of them performed external auditor functions of financials. In addition, many of them also provide the internal audit function to school districts and to cities. The, some of the, as we engaged with, in dialogue with the firms, we asked them about the scope of work that they would perform and the cost estimates that they would, if they could give us to launch an initiative to comply with the new House bill. And so, we have some of that information, and we also think some more of that information will be coming in, and we ask to receive that via email. And some of the information will be sent to the school board chair as well. Another consideration is that the school district does employ, or does have under contract, a financial auditing firm named Moore Stevens Lovelace. They have audited, been on our, under contract with the district since 2016, conducting financial audits. Every third year, the state conducts a financial audit, and then the other two years, the hired auditor conducts the audit. So, they have conducted to just concluding with the 2018 audit, and their contract is scheduled to renew in June. The current contract does include language that they can expand their auditing services, and when the contract was issued, they bid rates for labor categories should we ask them to provide additional services. So, the contract is structured for that, and then, of course, we should have the discussion about how that works all around. Additional information, Moore Stevens Lovelace has experience performing the internal auditor function for school districts and county government, and they have indicated that, should they participate with the school board, they would have a distinct engagement leader for the financial as compared to the internal auditing function, and that they could, for a cost not to exceed $7,500, come up with a audit plan that would consist of interviewing school board members and those that the school board members delegated them to interview with to determine the scope of auditing that would be performed. And then, they would deliver an audit plan. We asked all of the vendors we reached out to, could they give us an average ballpark of what does an individual audit cost? Or if you're looking at transportation, or maintenance, or another function? And so, we had a range between $20,000 to $50,000 were what the auditing firm said. So, just to give you an idea of what does it cost to perform each audit, it's kind of a bright, a wide range, but it gives you an idea depending on the complexity and the depth and the length of time that it would take. I invited Mr. Bill Blend from Moore Stevens Lovelace, who is on our contract currently, our financial auditor. He agreed to come into town from Orlando and be present with us today in the event that you had any questions regarding the information that I've shared with you so far.
Ms. Gittens.
Kind of, I guess, in answer to your question as to how do we know how to go forward, one of the things that this option would give us is, for the cost of $7,500, the audit plan. And am I correct in saying that that audit plan then is ours, should we choose to use it however?
Mr. Blend, could I ask you to please introduce yourself? And I think you might need to push on that button, the, on the microphone, at the base of the microphone, push, press and hold until the light turns red.
Go ahead, it's on.
All right.
Thank you. Green light on. Yes, Bill Blend, Moore Stevens Lovelace. I am the shareholder in charge of this school district's engagement. I've got over 25 years' public accounting and auditing experience. I've been doing government accounting and auditing for my entire career during that process. I'm a certified fraud examiner as well. I do various teaching. It's interesting that you guys started talking about the internal audit. I actually did a presentation for the Gainesville chapter of the IIA on what they do and some other issues there. So, it's, this is kind of timely from my perspective. As to your question, the answer is, it is your plan. So, the way this works, and I'm sure my colleagues to the left here would agree with me, your external auditor cannot be part of your internal controls, okay? So, but what we certainly can do is, we can gather information, okay? By, and any audit plan that you would perform would require this. You'd want individuals that know the organization have a concern and an interest in the organization to be involved in that process, to identify issues that, of concern to them, and potentially where they find weaknesses or things that need to be looked at. So, that, any good audit plan is going to encompass many individuals, concerned individuals of the organization itself. So, you just don't want, in my opinion, again, would be having somebody come out that doesn't know your organization at all to come and do a risk plan. They could give you a general assessment of where risks are in school board, payroll, construction, you know, just so broad. But the idea is to get the folks that know, every organization's different, they're set up differently, they have different individuals in them with different skill sets. So, to meet and talk to those people, to gather the information. So, the thought there was, contact those individuals, gather the information, come back to you with, here's what's been identified as concerns, current concerns. The internal audit function itself is going to be an ongoing function. If I'm to guess what the intent of the legislation is, and I don't want to intend what any lawmakers do, but if I were to guess, it was, they felt that there was a need to do a bigger, a deeper look at larger organizations than just the financial statement audit, that you want to look at the organization, where the risks are, and have a much more in-depth evaluation of that. So, that's why, in my communications, I stress the point that I would recommend, take your time, decide, do you want an internal function? Do you want to hire a third party? What are the resources available? Because, again, to do the different levels of auditing that you're going to require for an organization that decides, is going to take a multitude of skill sets to do that. So, sometimes, so, how many people do you want to bring on board that have these costs? So, and I apologize for diverting, but ultimately, the point is, is that form that assessment, come back to you with a list of potential areas that are deemed to be, have been pointed out to us as risk, and then you would make a decision as what you specifically wanted looked at. That would buy you time in this process to then develop an appropriate organization that you really want to have on board. So, but that's where I was headed.
Follow-up?
Yes.
So, in other words, now, you have done audits, or you're on contract to do overall audits for us already for this?
I am on contract to do your financial statement audit, so the audit of your CAF or your annual financial statements.
Okay. So, if we were to select your firm, would we have our own team, so to speak? I know that's not the verbiage. That would be the board, that would suffice for that board auditor position?
Well, you are, there's three functions going on. One is the external audit, which we perform. One is your internal accounts audit, so the audit of the school accounts, and that's performed by your internal auditor. So, you actually have the internal audit function here, but the thing is, do they have the resources to do this expanded role? Do the, you know, do the overall risk assessment? I would say most internal, so, they're not currently doing that because they've got, they're doing the internal account. And then, you now have this extra added burden, if you will, of hiring a, quote, "internal auditor." I'm not an attorney, and I won't speak for legal, but I would say that, as it states to the statute about, do you have an internal audit? You have that. Now, have they done a risk assessment, which qualified for that portion of the law? I assume not. Otherwise, you wouldn't be, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Would I'm referring to satisfy that? In my professional opinion, it would. You may have other folks that might say no to that. I can't speak to that, but I think what you're doing is, you're going down the right path. You're wanting to fulfill your obligation to comply with the law. I don't, I would be amazed if you got pushed back from the state side on that, or from any agency that might look at your organization. Again, taking the appropriate steps to address the related statute takes time.
And our first step in any situation that we would choose would be to have that audit plan prepared, which is what you could do for us, and you already know the organization. Is that correct?
We would, again, we would develop that. I got to be careful with that. What I'm looking at, from my perspective, is to give you a start, to give you a kickoff point, to look at areas that people, individuals, or the organization has concerns with, and we can start and support you in that process. Again, if you were to say, can we hire you and you be our internal auditor? I would have to say the answer to that question is no, unless you fire me as your external auditor, and then I could do that.
That was the question. Okay. Thank you.
Please don't fire me as your external.
But we need, anyway.
But, because we, and by the way, we do this for other organizations. Use my jargon, if you will. We have an agreement with, that we can do with our clients called an agreed-upon procedures contract. That meets all of the crime and to ensure that I am independent and still enables me to perform your external financial statement audit, so.
Ms. Vaughn.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So, let's say we engage your firm to develop an external audit plan for us, which we're going to have to do from someone. Would that plan be specifically reported to the board, being that you're already under contract to the district? Because we are, at least I am, looking very specifically for individuals, teams, that report to us as a board. And that, you know, besides what you come up with, there may be some things that we're particularly interested in to have in that plan. So, would the seven of us be the ones that develop the plan in conjunction with, well, I don't mean literally develop, but?
I understand.
Have input to the plan along with you?
Yes. My communication was very clear to that, that the board would have to be a part of that. As the governing or agency, if you will, using probably not an appropriate term, but as the governing body of the organization, you absolutely have to be a part of that. Secondarily, and two points I'd like to make. One is your external auditors. It may not seem that way, and I'm not really clear as to why, but we work for this body. We work and report to this board. We do that communication twice. We do it on the front side. We generally do that through a formal letter type of communication, which lays out our financial audit plan, but it's clear. And if any issues were ever come up during the financial statement audit, as your external auditors, we have an obligation to come to you. That said, I want to make that point. Secondarily, I've also said that the internal audit function would, is best line is directly to the board. If, and, but not everybody sets their organization up that way for various reasons. If you were to do it through the management side, if you will, it would be to the highest level of management, okay? So, it would be to the superintendent with an avenue that allows, should that internal auditor decide in their professional opinion, they have the absolute right, ability, and duty, quite frankly, to report to you. Because you have to have, and any good external auditor, when they're evaluating these, what an internal audit function does, if that line of reporting is not as I'm describing, then we judge that less independent than a different line of reporting. So, absolutely, the internal audit and anything that I would do would go directly to this group.
I'm very big on semantics, so.
No, that's fine.
You said that, yes, of course, this board would be a part of it. What I'm wanting to hear from anybody that comes in is that we are the seven that make the board and our board attorney, that we are the direct people that are, that you report to.
Absolutely.
The marching order, so to speak.
Well, if there was any misunderstanding, or I didn't make that clear, that's absolute, that statement is absolutely correct. That statement's absolutely correct.
And I'm particularly concerned because you're already under contract to the district as a whole, and I'm looking at our needs and also what the, what new bill or the new, what's the word I want?
Statute.
Statute, thank you, says that it reports to the board. So, that's, I just wanted to clarify.
No, no. But again, I'm going to reiterate, as your external auditor, I work for this body, and I report to this body, and I've done that on an annual basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I've got a question. How do we overcome the IIA, IIA position paper that was provided to us by the clerk of court's office? Page 3, Under Law, Statute and Regulation, that states, "Even if allowed by law or statute, internal auditing should never be outsourced to the same external audit firm that audits the organization's financial statements." And then, it goes on from there.
That's the IIA standard, but under the AICPA rules, as long as management directs and management directs where they, what they want looked at, and as long as the decision is made on corrective action by others, in other words, I can't say to you, you need to change your policy for purchasing from $50,000 to $25,000. That, I couldn't do that. I could make recommendations, you may want to consider changing that, or, you know, to different levels or a different way, but I can't make that decision for management and/or the board. The board and management have to make that decision. So, that's, that's the, the AICPA, and also the Yellow Book standards as well. They allow for that. Would you agree with that, folks, or disagree with that? Agree?
And then, the question, the other question is, how does an audit plan compare and contrast with a comprehensive risk assessment, which is what I think that you all recommended to us?
Again, I wasn't looking, I was reached out to, and I was trying to give feedback, and there was a question to us, is, are you an option? And so, I was responding to that. Again, my thought is, what, any involvement we would have as your external auditor, my thought was, it's going to be a short-term thing that you want to address in the near term, and then move on from, once you've decided, are we going to hire additional people in house? Are we going to contract this outside? And... And to, with the function of, hey, if you have a need, I mean, we're in May, and we all know how the year passes very quickly, that we could help you in the short term. And that was the goal. I'm not looking, I had no, absolutely will not impair my independence for this process, so you can be assured of that.
No, I understand.
Okay.
I just don't understand the difference between an audit plan and a comprehensive risk assessment. What are the differences between-
Well, an audit plan is generally, I would say, would be very specific to an area that's going to get looked at. So, what specific items you're going to look at, how you're going to look at them, and what's going to get involved. Where a risk assessment says, as an organization, and again, an appropriate risk assessment, I'm going to look to the folks that, hey, would involve many people in the organization, including legal, and including management, certainly including the board, that, again, that have the information about the organization, to come together and go, hey, you know, where, let's, let's look at ourselves in the mirror, and, you know, where, where do we have issues? And identify those, and really prioritize those as to, I think these are really big issues for us that we need to, you know, we need to get a handle on, and then, you know, modify them down. And so, that the plan is developed by, really, the internal auditor is part of the plan, but is not the sole participant in that, right? They're getting input from others, and then they're developing a plan and getting it approved, in this case, gets approved by the board. So-
How do you put together an audit plan without understanding what your risk is and where the areas of risk lie?
I missed the beginning of that. I apologize.
How do you put together an audit plan without first doing a risk assessment to understand where the areas of risk lie in the organization?
Well, again, you do the overall risk assessment of the organization. Then, once you've identified, let's say you decide that the bus program is high risk.
So, the risk assessment is first?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, yes.
All right. That was where I was confused.
Right.
I thought we were being, it was being suggested that we hire you to put together an audit plan without first doing a risk assessment.
No. And I guess where I may be a little deficient in my knowledge of this particular process is, if you already have an idea of things that you want looked at, then you've already kind of done your own risk assessment of that. And so, you may have areas that you want looked at. Again, everything's going to take time. I, I would, I am just curious, I would say most audit plans, so the risk assessment's done, then the audit plan's developed, it's approved by the board, a lot of times, not all those audits get done in a year. Because often, just like any good plan, it's got to realize that it's got to have flexibility, and it's got to have the ability, when an issue pops up, oh, guess what? We didn't know about this. Then they've got, everybody's got to shift gears and reshuffle, that now the risk gets shuffled. So, as we like to say in the external audit work, your audit plan is never complete until you sign the report, because you never know what's going to happen. Literally, you can be getting ready to issue a report, and you could get communication from legal, or you could get information from the client, that all of a sudden tells you, you got to put on the brakes and reevaluate what you've done and potentially do something differently.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah. So, what I essentially see them doing is comprehensive risk assessment, which only has to be done every five years. So, you take the comprehensive risk assessment, you take all of the operational efficiency audits that have been done over the last couple of years, that I've identified areas that the board is interested in exploring. We work with the external auditor to put together an audit plan with actionables the first year, but we're required to do the audit plan every year. So, essentially, you have to revisit the audit plan at the end of the first year and figure out what modifications you're going to make going forward. So, that's, that's basically how I see it. My opinion would be that we want to hire somebody for a year, because I don't think this board is ready to, has not come together on what it considers important-
Absolutely.
...areas to be, to be audited. And so, we need to get our act together. So, I think to comply with the law, my position would be that we hire somebody for one year. The comprehensive risk assessment is the unknown. I have no idea to what depth this goes. It's obviously broad, so I assume it's pretty shallow. And then, we are going to have to weigh that plus everything else we've got on our plate and come up with a plan.
And do I recall the clerk's office two weeks ago saying that any internal auditor would require that they conduct that risk assessment themselves as a preliminary step toward any internal audit work? Or could we rely on other audits that have already been done to fulfill that risk assessment piece?
If you could introduce yourself, please.
Tim Parks, the Inspector General for the Lee County Clerk of Courts. And as far as, the question is, you want to-
I thought I remembered, and I told you earlier, you were speaking to us in very highly technical language, so I may not have understood what you said, but I thought I remembered you saying that, that any truly independent internal auditor would want to conduct their own risk assessment, rather than rely on other audits that had already been done by the organization, so that you could get your own independent feel for where the risks lie in the organization.
If another organization were to do a comprehensive risk assessment where there were values that they could put in there and demonstrate that, you know, this area is high risk, this area is lower risk, and somehow measure that in objective means, and I think that internal auditor could come in after the fact and pick up on that audit plan. The risk assessment drives the audit plan, and then you execute the audit plan, and if it's, if it's done comprehensively and with objectivity, I don't see a problem with that.
I agree, and I think too, to, I apologize.
Bill Bland.
Bill Bland. What he was speaking to with previously issued audit reports, those are taken into consideration as well. So, when you look at it enterprise-wide, you involve all the stakeholders and get the input, and go to the experts in each of those departments and get their feedback, what keeps them up at night, and kind of start that conversation early on, so you've got the input from all those stakeholders.
When you spoke with us at our workshop prior, one of the things that you mentioned was that in order to do our organization, that you would have to staff up to do that.
Absolutely.
Right. Because what you have now is, you know, one-
The needs of the team currently.
Right.
And our audit plans, yes.
You would have to build a team up, which would take time.
Yes.
And I guess this question to Mr., to Mr. Bland would be, if you were able to come in right away, to hit the ground running, to do the assessment and the audit plan, which would also give us time to decide, like Ms. Morgan said, what we're going to do, how is that going to affect your relationship? Because you did mention you don't want us to fire you.
No.
So, how, how could that work? Could, are there separate teams or separate divisions of your company that we would be working with one division while another division is doing something else, and that's legal?
It, again, it would, two different, two different scenarios. One, either way, it would, what I was suggesting was that we could present to you a different team to do the internal audit work for you. Again, I want to be clear that I, I would work part of doing the risk assessment, but ultimately, the way I'm viewing that would be, I'm going to gather information to present to you in a summarized form, what has been identified through those communications with the, thank you for the term, stakeholders of the organization, bring it to you, and then you would direct what you want looked at. I'm not going to decide what gets looked at. I can't do that. So, I'm not going to do that. But I can certainly participate and help you organize those thoughts, if you will, and that different data, those different data points from the interested parties, and bring that to you, for then you to say, okay, this is what we want looked at. But I, so, and then, that, still, once we looked at that, and then, again, this is a way to get the function going, start to look at some areas in depth, is if we set the agreement up where we're going to identify, work with, the team come to you with an audit plan for a specific area, and you would say, yes, that's the audit plan that we want done, okay? And then we would go implement that audit plan.
And how quickly can you gear up to do any of this?
We could start-
Yesterday?
Well, yesterday passed, but, you know, we could do that, we, we have the resources to bring a team onboard, so. And, you know, to give the extra insurance from our side as we're evaluating, that's why we would bring in a different group, so that, you know, we would have the knowledge as a, as an organization, but different individuals would be responsible for those steps.
Ms. Jordan?
Mr. Bland, I have a question, please. So, the audit plan is, you said not to exceed 7,500. That's for you to devise that plan?
Right. To gather information and present to you what are, you know, kind of what the, hey, these were pointed out as what keeps people up at night, and appreciate that, those are all good terms there, that the stakeholder, that keep the stakeholders up at night. And, but again, bring that to you as an informational document to say, okay, here's what's being pointed out to us, what do you want looked at? If you're saying, we want to hire you to perform the risk assessment, give us a document, and tell us what's going to get done, then I would say I can't do that for you.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. And, thank you. The reason I am asking, because that is the number that you see. But then, again, you got to read into the rest of it. You're from Orlando.
Yep.
So, your team would have to come here. Where do they stay? Who pays for that? Where's the cost at for the, what is the cost for each of the individual audits? So, we're just looking at one sum that they show there.
Right.
But where's the rest of that cost at?
Right. Well, that, now, I think even the folks to my left here would agree with this. To sit here and price out specific plans without even knowing the areas would be economically foolish for us. So, we, based upon, again, my, the thought is, hey, as another option for you, so what I think you have is multiple options. One, we could help you to start rolling, the ball rolling down the road, if you will. You could certainly engage the clerk's office to perform the risk assessment for you, do that as well. Or you could go to a third party and have them do it. You know, you could put out a bid. So, those all take different times and different processes. But I was just trying to offer up another option for you to get the ball rolling. But I don't think anyone's going to be able to come to you today without that first step, at least, being done, and tell you what it's going to cost subsequently, so.
No, and I do appreciate that. But I know that when we had spoken, because we've been speaking about this for, with the last couple of meetings now, and this is the first time we've heard of you.
Well, I, I'm not really-
Roland Brockton, before us before today.
Yeah, I apologize.
And I know that we had asked about bringing some type of figures, numbers, to us, and so, of course, when I'm just looking at a number, just curious of why, that's my-
Yeah, it's just because we're, there's no, you know, what are we looking at? You know, you want us to look at a capital project, you want us to look at a debt agreement, make sure there's compliance issues going on, you know? Once you had the areas identified, at least at a minimum, then we could, you know, narrow down the scope and then say, okay, this is what we can do, and this is how much it would cost.
I think what you're really saying is the, it's not the audit plan that it costs 7,500, it's the risk assessment. I mean, essentially-
Yeah. Essentially, identifying the key areas of concern to the stakeholders, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
And addition to the other things that the state requires. So, for example, the state says you have to verify financial records, opine on the reliability, report on the current financial health and projected financial condition, disclose failure to comply with applicable laws and policies, and to provide the comprehensive risk assessment. That's what the law requires, plus the action plan.
And, and the definition of all those, much like as the attorney was alluding to earlier, are going to be judged differently in every school district around the state, all 67 of them, so.
So, are you saying that the requirements, which, which are just a comprehensive risk assessment, not an action plan for any particular area, would be approximately 7,500?
Yeah, that's, again, to develop that, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And then, after that, my understanding is, based on which area we choose to take action on first, we'll have a price tag on it if it's, you know, each audit is going to have a different amount, correct?
Right. In which you could then choose to, based upon economic reasons, say, you know, yes or no, too, or, again, what we're trying to do is support the school board's goal to comply with this and move forward in the process, and that's really the role, that's all we're trying to achieve for you.
And we could set, like, let's say we set a limit of 80,000, and that might mean three audits, depending on which ones, or it might mean five, depending on which ones. They all have different costs.
Yes. You could absolutely set a budget, absolutely.
Yeah. So, so, once the assessment, the risk assessment is done, and we've complied with the requirements of the law, then we have to decide how we're going to move forward. We can't just say we're going to have an $80,000 budget. We're basically going to have to draw up our priorities, and it may be Mr. Bland's group, it may be somebody else who's an expert in transportation, or somebody who's an expert, expert in food service, that we are going to pay to be, to execute that component of our action plan. And, and essentially, that's when your priorities come in. When we figure out how much some of this stuff is going to cost, it will help us prioritize. But I don't see how we could just say, well, we're going to budget X amount for this. I think we need to budget for complying with the law, and then we have to figure out what we're going to do, essentially, for 20, 19, 20. And, and I assume that if we do that, Mr. Dotick, we are in compliance?
Well, I assume, I, I say that because obviously the statute's not even in effect yet, so.
They're not going to turn on us.
Well, obviously, there's always a potential, there's always a potential for an audit finding if you're not in compliance with the statute. What the statute says is that the internal auditor should every five years do a comprehensive risk assessment, which you've mentioned, and then have an expansive role in reviewing, if you will, compliance with laws, the efficiency of the organization, financial records and reports, safeguarding of assets, and it's all listed in the statute, A through H, and then prepare audit reports. It doesn't describe, what you're all talking about today, is how you go about fulfilling that requirement. So, what I'm hearing is this gentleman's desire to help the board fulfill that requirement.
Right.
So, I, it's hard to give me a yes or no answer, because I don't have any case law or anything to say, this is where the state said that was not in compliance.
I should, I would like to mention that it is optional in the statute, if I'm reading it correctly, that other audits and reviews, as we direct for determining the efficiency of operations and for detecting and preventing fraud, waste, and abuse, is optional. So, we-
Right.
Okay.
And other audits and reviews, as the district school board directs for determining, correct?
That is optional.
And then it lists those in A through H, correct?
I think that in terms of compliance, there, there's nothing about the public meetings or any meetings we've had on the subject that indicate we're trying to circumvent the law in any way, shape, or form. We're trying to fulfill the requirements of law.
I agree with that.
So, ultimately, if the state comes after us, our best defense is, we had no guidance from you. And, and this brings me to a conversation I have with the superintendent about Richard Corcoran's, what is his name? Commissioner Corcoran's presentation to FSBA, where he said, the DOE no longer wants to be the compliance police. They want to help school districts to be in compliance, and in so doing, they, they want to present us with clearer guidelines, clearer forms to be filled out. You know, if, if a district makes the same mistake year after year after year, that's one thing, but you make a mistake here and there, we're not going to punish you for that anymore, we're going to help you to be compliant. So, I think, given that environment at the DOE, and our true, genuine desire to follow the law, I can't see that we're going to get in trouble here.
Ms. Malley?
We are coming up on our deadline for time, by the way. Ms. Malley?
Yes, I do have a little bit more information I wanted to share with the board that might be helpful in reviewing your options.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or can I move on to, Ms. Vaughn? Did you have a question?
Oh, I, I was just going to say that I like what Ms. Morgan said about budgeting for complying with the statute, and the idea that we would prioritize, and I think, as we think about the money that we're going to be expending in the budget for this, we're not thinking about the money that we're potentially going to be saving. So, the icing on the cake will be, you know, if we spend, let's say, $200,000, but we reap $250,000 worth of savings, we're at that much. So, I think we need to kind of put our focus back on the positive in making an investment where the dividend is really going to pay us.
Okay. So, the next slide I wanted to share with you are four options that I've come up with that, and again, these are for contracting the services of an internal auditor, and we have discussed employing internal auditing staff as well. So, the one thing I wanted to make the board aware of is that a competitive solicitation is optional, that the, there is no require, it is exempt from bidding, so the board could choose to rece- So the board could choose to receive information, as we've been gathering it and forwarding it to the board, and evaluate that information and award a contract without the competitive solicitation process. I would share that it's always a good idea to have consistent processes and we would be willing, staff would be willing to help guide in defining some standards that might be beneficial when we're expending taxpayer monies to make sure that we have a good evaluation process. Another option is, of course, to consider, after the conversation we had with Moore-Stevens-Lovelace, if there is an opportunity to use their services. In addition, any other firm could be contracted, either by receiving a letter from them and then engaging in conversation with them and writing a contract, or piggybacking another school district that has an internal auditor on board already. So we could prepare that list of internal auditors across the district, and you could potentially interview them or request a statement of work or a proposal from them. And finally, you could issue a competitive solicitation. It is not unusual to issue a solicitation, even if it's not required. For example, technology is bid exempt, as is this service, but we often go out to bid so that we can receive and compare apples to apples on what we're asking for and obtain the best price. And then just two other considerations. We had mentioned hiring staff, which could be potentially a combination of hiring a staff and having a consultant who would assist staff. So that's always an option. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, and Ms. Vaughn just did, budget considerations. This is yet another unfunded state mandate. We are required to fulfill this role. Funds are not being allocated for it. And so before we sign a contract, we'd need to make sure that we, if it was prior to July 1st, we would need to make sure we look at this year's budget and determine where that funding is coming from. And as we plan our budget for next year, we need to make sure that we're allocating funding for that.
I kind of see the considerations that you brought up as things that we do along the line. I see the most pertinent thing that we need to do as far as complying and getting started, rather than, you know, putting it off anymore. I would like for us to look at agreement or whatever to let MLS at least begin the process. We're going to have to have that risk assessment, audit plan in place, regardless of what we do. It would be a first step that we could get things moving to know, and also buy us some time to decide how we're going to go forward with these other considerations. Is that correct?
Yes, that is one option, yes.
Okay.
Can you go back a slide? Ms. Fisher, my back to you. Do you have a comment before I ask? No?
No.
Does number four preclude number three?
Yes, the difference between number three and number four is that if another school district has an internal auditor on, under contract, that they have competitively solicited, we could piggyback that contract. The fourth option is for us to develop a statement of work, release it, receive proposals, evaluate them, and bring before the board a recommendation to approve that.
So, I get the difference, but if we go through number four and we find that Hillsborough County, for example, has a better contract in place, can we then go back and take advantage of piggybacking?
Yes, the board can choose to reject a bid that has been issued.
And how long will the competitive solicitation process take?
The standard process for a competitive solicitation is about 90 days. However, this could be streamlined to reduce the amount of time the solicitation is on the street. I think that the key thing would be to define the scope of services that we require.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, and that's really my issue. We're not in a position to define the scope, receive and evaluate proposals. We're just not. We don't know what we want. And the same thing with piggybacking. We don't know what we're going to get if we piggyback. All we're doing is going by price, is what I assume. We don't really know about the services. I would have to agree with Ms. Gittens. I think we need to move quickly. We need to comply with the law. We are not in a position to do any of these things now.
Right.
We're just not. And we, I think we need to expect us to do this a year from now, or nine months from now, or whatever.
Dr. Atkins, do you want to weigh in before I seek consensus?
No, I mean, you've said it. I mean, my, from my listening to this board and talking with staff extensively about this issue, I think the most important piece from my perspective is that we're working real hard to diligently uphold the intention of the law. And that's what we are doing. I think we need to do this while it should be expeditious in terms of our actions. You know, we want to do it right. You know, I had a quick conversation with Mr. Williams, who talked about the importance of, you know, moving forward long-term, you're going to want to do things with the greatest degree of transparency, which includes, you know, a bid that you'd want to do correctly, competitive solicitation. That's where, but you have to know, you have to define it in order to be able to do that properly. So that's my two cents.
Okay, so does everybody understand Ms. Gittens' proposal?
I just have one question. And because the clerk, of course, they have been here, and I really appreciate your time, could they actually do the same thing that we're asking the other gentleman to do, the risk assessment, and then move forward? I don't know if that's... I want them to have an opportunity to say yes or no.
People who are certified in doing some risk assessments and such, but it would take some time.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was put out there to you.
Okay, so does everybody understand Ms. Gittens? Thumbs up, thumbs in the middle, thumbs down? Six, thumbs up. Ms. Reader?
Can you, for the purposes of Ms. Reader, because she will come back and ask me, can we...
Do you want me to restate it?
Can we state what Ms. Gittens?
Do you want me to restate it?
What you all just agreed to?
Or do you want to do it?
No, go ahead.
Basically, that at this time, we would direct staff to move forward with possible negotiations with Mr. Blenden, MSL? MSL, to do the risk assessment and audit plan. The conversations that staff would have would determine if it's, what, a six-month or a year, and I think we were talking about a year to get everything done. Is that correct? Or is it okay just to say this generically, and then the time factor and all be done later?
I would recommend that it be for one year, or, and we always include a cancellation term for convenience. So if we got completed in six months and decided that our new plan was to do something a little bit different, we could then conclude the contract.
So in tandem, we're working on these other options, once we know what it is that we need to do. So, that's... Is that clear enough? Is that clear enough?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
It's not a vote. They all, there was consensus.
Reach consensus, thumbs up by six. Does staff have the direction they need from us?
So my understanding is we're going to move forward with requesting further detailed information from Moore-Stevens-Lovelace to perform a risk assessment and audit plan, and propose a timeline and a price and further detail. The one additional item that I'd like to make sure is that, because the firm is currently our external financial auditor, that we have legal way in to make sure that we build that... Where I come from, it's a firewall between, to have the separation of duties between the financial auditor and the internal auditor very clear.
Great. All right, we're 10 minutes over. You, thank you for bringing your expertise to us today. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And can I say one last thing? Thank you to staff. This was a very, very quick turnaround for all of you. And thank you all so much. You worked really hard to get us to this point. Thank you.
So next, we have the attorney discussion, board attorney position.
It's good afternoon again. I think there's two parts to this discussion. The one which has a more immediate, I believe, decision to be made, and Mr. Williams is going to talk you through that. And then, time permitting, we can begin again on the conversation around the structure, if the board so desires to do so. But I think, for the purposes of urgency, we'll turn it over to Mr. Williams.
And good afternoon through the chair. I think when we last left the workshop, the conversation surrounded exploring the option of retaining an outside law firm to serve in the capacity as the school board attorney. As a result of that conversation, I reached out to several law firms that I believe have the experienced individuals to fulfill that role. And again, also got recommendations from Mr. Dotick with respect to that. I reached out to five different law firms, two of which declined after I shared with them our board meeting schedule. And that was just as a result of just conflicts of actually appearing for the various board meetings. Three firms, however, are still in the running, I guess. And those would be Wyserota, Helfman, Cole, and Bierman, which is a firm, it's actually a South Florida-based firm. They do educational work for Miami-Dade County Public Schools. There's also Boswell and Dunlap, which I believe they currently serve as the assistant school board attorney for Polk County Schools. They have an existing school board attorney, but the firm actually represents them as well as a staff member. The third option would be Mr. Kevin Penley, who works for Resolutions in Special Education. He currently serves as an ESE attorney for the district and handles various DOA hearings with respect to our cases, but also is board certified in education law and very well-versed in education law. So, in reaching out to those firms, I indicated that one of the discussions that we had was to potentially explore the option of a lump-sum contract. And at this point, I placed it at a six-month period to, again, give us time to evaluate what we want to do. Most of the firms, you know, were inclined to provide a hourly rate. So I guess we could calculate a lump-sum fee, but they put an hourly rate to their particular contracts. And those ranged from $177 an hour, which is a blended rate of partners and associates, which was Boswell and Dunlap, which I will say is a pretty good rate for the public sector. And then, one rate was 215, which was Kevin Penley and RISE. And then the third firm, which was a South Florida firm, was 250 to 275. So those would be the hourly rates associated with their representation of the district. And again, they were apprised of our board meeting dates, as well as given the job description of the school board attorney to essentially assess what the function of that role would be. Mr. Murphy at Boswell and Dunlap was fully aware of these, the kind of the role being assistant school board attorney for Polk County. And I think he also serves as city attorney for several municipalities in that area. Kevin Penley, again, is very familiar with our district, having represented us and was with me at the actual school board attorneys conference last, in February. He was there getting educated, just like myself. So, and then Wyserota, again, they represented the district in Miami and also represent a lot of local municipal organizations. I think the key component being that the district wants someone that is well-versed in Robert's Rules of Order and serving as a parliamentarian for school board meetings, and then also aware of educational law issues, both at the state and federal level, so that they can advise the school district with respect to those questions that may arise throughout the course of their representation. So, again, there is the option, as Ms. Malley presented, with respect to, in the future, doing a solicitation or procuring these services, if that's something the district desires to do. However, in a more immediate resolution would be to potentially, again, we are allowed to use the exception for professional services, hire a firm that we already know exists that have competent people in the area of education law.
Questions or comments from board members? Ms. Gittens?
On Kevin Penley? Is that a singular individual, or is he connected with a firm?
He actually, he's connected with a firm. And I can certainly provide bios with respect to each of the firms that I mentioned. But he is connected to a firm, which is, again, Resolutions in Special Education. I will acknowledge that he does focus on some ESE issues, but he is well-versed in other educational...
Well, that was the other part of my question. You said that he's doing work for us now with ESE. Would he be able to stop doing that to just work with us, so as not to have any conflicts? You're looking like, oh, no, I don't want to...
Mr. Dotick. No, that doesn't present any inherent conflict. He's representing the interests of the board and the district in those ESE matters. So there's no, in other words...
No, I understand that, but I mean...
So he could continue representing the... I handle ESE matters for the district currently as the board attorney.
That was my question.
Yes.
Would he have time to do that and take care of it?
Oh, time? I don't know what his other case load is. I'll just tell you about a little bit about Kevin. He's a colleague of mine and a well-respected attorney, and he does work for Resolutions in Special Education, who's, they have attorneys, just two, three other attorneys, two other attorneys, there's three. Julie Weatherly, who's an expert in special education law, is essentially the founder of the firm, and she's located in Georgia, and they have an attorney in Alabama. So it's three of them that focus on special education defense work for school districts. And Kevin has practiced in Georgia and in Florida, and did work at one time for the Collier County School District, prior to us engaging him for special education work.
And the last part of my question is, all three of them are willing and aware of doing a six-month contract, but you, I mean, and yet it would be at the hourly rate rather than a flat rate?
Again, I think there's always the option of revisiting the flat rate. I think you'd have to approximate hours. And, I mean, they're, that discussion usually leads to them not wanting to lose money with respect to a flat fee rate. But that being said, I think, you know, there's, I think there's room to negotiate those type of issues. And, yeah.
Yeah, questions or comments? So, next steps for us are to get the bios and meet with the superintendent, give feedback, and then he brings forward a recommendation? Are those next steps?
No, I thought we would.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes, see, the problem is that...
Make a motion.
No, no, no. The problem is the superintendent really isn't involved in this.
Doesn't have anything to do with it.
Because he's, he's a member of the governance team. It's really our responsibility to take this forward. I guess I'm looking for direction from you, Brian. I will, and I'm going to put something out on the table that may make people uncomfortable. But right now, if we're going on an hourly, if we're talking about an hourly basis, we have some school board members who are using an extraordinary amount of attorney time. And the question is going to be, you know, how do we manage the use of that person's time, once we, that person or that firm's time, once we have someone in place? That's, that's, these aren't of mine.
Ms. Gittens?
I was talking briefly before the meeting with Mr. Dotick, and I would like to suggest a special meeting possibly later next week to come to conclusion on these things and make that discussion. Would that give you time to get, well, I mean, I think we have three right here, if everybody is willing, to receive the information, get together in a special meeting by the end of next week, and discuss it with both of you, both attorneys and the boards, to make our decision at that point.
If I could just interject, the only reason to have a special meeting would be to vote on something.
Right.
Otherwise, you could do a workshop. I mean, it's, so that's why I suggest, I didn't know what was going to happen with the auditor or this conversation. So if you all wanted to vote on something, the proper vehicle without a regular meeting scheduled would be a special meeting. That's...
Do we need to vote on it?
Well, that's, well, you would need to vote on any contract to approve my, the person that's going to succeed me. And thank you.
So it's like two-pronged. We would have to choose or decide on one of these, or whichever our decision is. And then the second part is to have the vote to ratify that contract.
Correct, but you really can't do that at the same... But you really can't do that at the same meeting because.
No, right.
You don't know who you're choosing to negotiate with, so.
With time being of the essence, though, and I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I'm sorry. I apologize, but I had to leave the room, so I did not hear all the names.
Oh, sure.
Can we repeat those?
You said it.
Thank you.
The three firms that are, again, I reached out to five, but there are three that were actually able to perform the services based on what we needed and the time constraints. Wyserota, Helfman, Cole and Beerman is a South Florida-based firm. They have about 60 lawyers and have performed school board work, I believe, for Miami-Dade County Public Schools and also Broward County Public Schools. John Boswell and Dunlap, LOP, is a Polk County-based firm. They currently serve as the Assistant School Board Attorney for Polk County. And the third firm is RISE, which is Resolutions in Special Education. However, the attorney that would be representing the district would be Kevin Penley, who is a board certified education lawyer and has also performed work for the district and currently is performing work for the district with respect to ESE matters.
And may I ask one more question then? Was there any conversation or contact with Henderson Franklin?
There was contact with, I will say, John Agnew, who previously worked at Henderson Franklin. He just recently left and currently serves as the City Attorney for Sanibel. I did reach out to him. He was interested, however, last night during our conversation. He double-checked the dates and it conflicts with his role. So our connection with him was through Henderson Franklin, but no, I have not reached out to Henderson Franklin directly.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
I just had a question, please. So they would come and do the hour, two hours, whenever we're, whenever we have meetings, they would be here? So that's at the hourly rate? And then, however many hours we deem necessary for them to be here because they're all from somewhere else?
Well.
Or is that telephone hours?
Mr. Penley is local. The other firms, I discussed that because I anticipated that as a question. I think the goal would be for them each to provide office hours at some point during the week where they could be available. Then, any other communication would obviously be done via email or telephone. You know, in today's world, a lot of lawyers work remotely. I recognize that Mr. Dotig's in the office at all times. But I think customarily, they, you can, if you can get dates where they can physically be here, I mentioned that to them because I told them I think our board would want actual physical presence at the district offices. So I think that the goal would be to get designated office hours throughout the week that aren't necessarily every day.
And so that they would track the hours via email and phone?
Correct.
Ms. Morgan?
Oh, I thought your name was Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, my question kind of relates to what Ms. Jordan said and what Ms. Morgan said earlier. I guess I wasn't aware that some board members are using an extraordinary amount of hours. Is there any way, Mr. Dotig, that you, I know you're here every day, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't characterize it as extraordinary. I know some of you certainly access my services more than others. But is there days when it happens more often than not? Sure. But I also answer principals' questions. I answer other individuals in the organization's questions. So inordinately, relative to any of you, I don't necessarily think so. I think when there's new board members, that, and I've only had the experience with new board members because I came on board in July and the board turned over in November. So my experience is that new board members, some of you, certainly not you, Ms. Vaughn, but others, are going to have a lot more questions. So, and that's, that's the nature of the job. But I do have to say that Ms. Morgan is correct, that when a lawyer is billing hourly, you won't have the necessary luxury, without being billed, of simply dropping in or picking up the phone and saying, hey, Mr. Lawyer, here's what I'd like to discuss.
And so to finish that, Ms. Morgan has a very real concern. I, you know, how might we limit it? Or I don't know what kind of scenarios. You said maybe there would just be certain office hours that would self-regulate, but then we'd have the issue of, well, who gets in to see so and so? I mean, I, yeah, with this hourly, I see lots of problems on the horizon.
I think we prioritize the second half of the conversation, which is what is, what is the next step? What is the legal function going to look like in the school district of Lee County? And to the greatest extent possible, minimize the use of an hourly attorney for now.
And how, and how, yeah, how do we do that? Yeah.
Ms. Morgan?
No, you said what I was going to say, so thank you.
I think the thing is, for now, that this is a temporary, so that we are not caught, we have exactly 15 business days before that chair is empty. So we need to have that chair filled on or before 15 business days. So it is a temporary measure if we need to collaborate better or whatever in using those hours. And I guess it's just something we'll have to discuss as to how we do that. But the other option is to have the chair empty. So I think we need to make sure that we do have someone in that place.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so to reiterate what you said, Ms. Patrico, I think that, Mr. Williams, if you would draw up responsibilities of the board attorney, specific, so that that, whoever that individual is, knows that their responsibilities and their billing hours are limited to these activities. That would be, I mean, we're going to have to have a contract. And I think we need to know what we can expect from that contract. And it may not be what we've had.
Ms. Fisher?
So again, I apologize for being absent for a few minutes, but what is the, what is the length of this temporary contract?
Six months.
Six months?
And through the chair, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think the goal would be six months. That being said, again, in light of recent discussion, I think there's always the, you know, I always recommend putting a termination for convenience clause in our contracts as well. So in the, in the event we go for one or two months and, you know, the billable rates are higher than we anticipated, I mean, it gives us time to explore other options. And I think right now, the goal is to solve an immediate need and then give ourselves the flexibility to explore a longer-term solution, so. And again, I can always go back and revisit the flat fee. I think, again, someone loses on flat fee, no matter who it is. Either they make more money than they should have, or they make less money than they should have. But it's hard to determine that based on, without, you know, looking into a crystal ball and determining how often they're going to be utilized. So I've seen it happen both ways, where an attorney has lost money because the use of staff in that particular matter far exceeded the contracted amount. But then I also could see it working the other way, depending on what you calculate out. Because you, again, you're simply estimating what the hours would be and then coming up with a lump number.
Ms. Morgan?
So could we bundle some of this stuff and then do a, an hourly fee on others? So for example, we bundle the parliamentarian, we bundle five to six hours a week in office presence and, you know, do that? And then essentially.
The difficulty there, and at least from, not arguing their case, but I think from the law firm's perspective, is that it's hard to anticipate how many hours it's actually going to be. So for example, we may start at a 2:00 briefing and go all the way to 6:00. You know, it just, without knowing, and I think when I was looking at it, trying to calculate based on the rate, I was estimating a full day on days of board meetings because we have the briefing. Obviously, there may be some need for discussion prior to that. There may be a workshop entered in between, somewhere in between that. So I think on board meeting days, it's anticipated that's an eight-hour day for them, just given the nature and historic of what has occurred, including pluses and deltas, so you, because you have meetings go on a little bit longer, so.
Okay, I just want to follow up. So half of Mr. Dotig's sal, we're talking half of Mr. Dotig's salary, essentially, is, right? I would assume would be a reasonable number. How many hours would that buy? Do we know?
And I'll, I use the median rate just to calculate. I think the, estimating eight hours a day on board meeting days, the, at the, I'll use the middle rate, 215 an hour, would approximately come out to somewhere around $20,000 or less. So that's all of the board meetings for the next six months, which would be two board meetings a month, using those numbers at eight hours a day. So that just gives you a perspective of the amount of money it would cost.
And as Mr. Rickemacher came up and just mentioned, you could always do a not-to-exceed, so you could say, you know, when it hits this amount each month, then any other requests that come in, you could have to come back as a board and authorize additional hours.
Ms. Fisher?
So then, this is temporary just for the needs of meetings and any responsibilities of the board attorney? Did we have discussion about anything beyond that?
No, that's not.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Jordan?
I think my question is kind of like that, because I know that Mr. Dotig does more than just sit at the, you know, sit at that seat right there and listen to us. There's other things that come before him. Who would be doing that, then? Are we asking the person that's coming in for those six months to carry on all of that?
Yeah, yes, and I think.
Contract looking and everything else that he does?
Correct. And that's actually one of the more immediate concerns, because he does, he has the signature on contracts, so.
Right.
Obviously, we need someone to fill that role for legal sufficiency of contracts. But, you know, and again, I sent them his, his job description, but obviously, we'd need to have some discussion in terms of him articulating specific roles and things that he currently does to ensure that they understand that's a responsibility that they would take. And that may include legislative, you know, review and things along those lines.
So I'm just asking that, that Mr. Dotig be involved in that prior to leaving to assist?
And I, I've already, Brian and I have already had this conversation. One of the big things, actually, that I work closely with Dr. Atkins' staff is the board agenda items. So someone, I mean, I can review them for your meeting May 7th, because I will still be here in April. But after that, they continue to roll, you're going to continue to have meetings. So a board attorney needs to review those agenda items and approve them. So that's a significant task.
So what do we do? Do we ask you to bring a recommendation? Do we have a workshop and talk about who we're going to choose? And then, and then the chair makes a recommendation at a meeting?
If I was still here, yes, just like Mr. Martin brought my recommendation.
You're going to have to still be here.
So. Right. So, so when you do this on the 23rd, if there's a recommendation on the 23rd or a special meeting before or after that, yes, I would bring that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Can I finish my question?
I'm sorry.
Are you, do you have a feel for who would, like, gun to your head right now, of these three attorneys, could you make a recommendation?
I couldn't simply, obviously, I would go with the person I know, who's Mr. Penley. But I don't know the two other firms, so I can't recommend them one way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Gittens?
I would like to recommend for consensus that we schedule a special meeting because of the time factor, that Mr. Williams and Mr. Dotig would confer and provide for us the information about the three firms so that we can review it. That they would also provide that duties issue, the special things that may come up that would be a part of it as well. And that we would have a special meeting in order to ratify a vote for one of those as soon as possible, possibly the end of next week. And then, we will be moving forward in tandem with deciding what we're going to do long term. So we may have other options that come up quicker than, than later, that would shorten the time that we would have to use the contracted firm. But I'm just saying that I suggest we get the information from them, as well as the duties list, and that we review it, we vote on it, and move forward.
You don't vote then? Well, at a special meeting, we would. I'm just not clear on why a special.
Oh, you're calling for a special meeting?
Yeah, I'm not clear on why a special meeting would be required if we have a workshop and then we can vote on it at our next action meeting. Why is a special meeting required?
Well, okay, the question is the time factor. How soon can someone begin? And I think that the shortest time, the more time that we have to overlap with Mr. Dotig and Mr. Williams in place so that there's a smooth transition between the whoever is coming in. If we wait and vote on it on the 23rd, we're coming pretty close to when Mr. Dotig is leaving. So, I mean, I'm just saying, if we had more time, it would be quicker if we just did a, I mean, why would we have to wait till the 23rd? Is what I'm asking.
Well, I guess my, my thing is that we need to have time to consider. So if we have a special meeting and we don't have all of this information, let's say, four or five days beforehand, along with a recommendation at the special meeting, it's going to be very hard for most of us to make a decision. If we workshop it, then that's something else. But I'm, I don't know. I'm just wondering if staff can, you know, we're asking staff to pull together a lot of information in a very short period of time in order for us to make a recommendation that, to make, to vote that same day, or to be able to have more time.
Do you already have the information about the firms, Mr. Williams?
I do, but I actually specifically asked them to gather information that they would want me to present. Obviously, I can go to their websites and pull, you know, information, but they're going to be more versed in what they do. I would say this, I mean, this is somewhat of a big decision in terms of who's going to be representing the district, at least temporarily. And I think that it may be in your best interest to workshop it so that they can actually come and you can have who the lawyer is actually going to be present to you and at least you able to evaluate their knowledge or ask specific questions of them with respect to their knowledge of education law or, you know, their knowledge of parliamentarian procedures. Because essentially, you have to feel comfortable with who's sitting up there next to you. And I think that's the only way you could.
And how long would that take you to put together?
I can reach out to them today. And all of the attorneys are fully aware, it's just a matter of coordinating that particular date. And the reality of it is, if they want to work for the district, they need to make themselves available, you know.
So could we possibly then get that together, let's say, for next week? We have a workshop, I think, scheduled anyway, and then do a special meeting for the vote? Or do we?
There's no workshop, I don't, I don't believe, unless something happened when I wasn't here. But I don't believe there's a workshop scheduled next week.
Okay.
There's a workshop before the meeting on the 23rd. I do know that. And you do, keep in mind, you need four days for advertising a workshop. So if you're going to schedule one for late next week, you'd need to do that by the end of this week.
But it is feasible, I mean, it is possible to do it for the end of next week. Is it feasible for you to get them for the end of next week?
I believe so. Again, you know, with the exception of Mr. Penley, who's got less attorneys, I think the other two, again, my goal is to get the person here who's actually going to be sitting in this. And so I'll certainly reach out to them today and ask their availability for all of next week and give ourselves at least scheduling it later in the week. I'll shoot for later in the week, that way we have enough time to know if it.
I'm just afraid of time-wise, if we try to workshop this on a day that we have other briefings and other, and an action, it's just going to be too much. We need to give it, I think, a priority time to have that discussion.
Ms. Fisher?
So considering that we have two weeks from today till the next meeting, I think that we should schedule a workshop for later next week, review the information, hear what the people have to say, and be ready for Mr. Dotig's recommendation on the 23rd. I think that's the simplest way, and it gives us enough time to review the information and to think about it, make a decision, and have any discussions we need. But we need to schedule that workshop and plan for the recommendation on the 23rd. Please, thank you.
Just sort of commit to each other that we will not leave that workshop until we decide what our next step is going to be with regard to a legal department or a board attorney or whatever. Because, again, you know, this is a short-term fix. And if we get used to this and comfortable with this, then we're not going to prioritize that discussion. And we need to decide where we're going.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I, I can't agree to that. It's, to come out of that meeting, having made a decision about the board attorney and to know what we're going to do long-term with respect to a legal department, I think that's asking too much of us. I truly do. If you want to have another workshop two weeks after that and talk, have that conversation in order, I'm sorry, but I know. We've talked about this already for a month, and we're, we haven't made a decision yet. So, so we're looking at a situation where we're paying somebody hourly, and we're paying somebody hourly, and we're paying somebody hourly, and we're not even discussing.
and we're not even discussing about, discussing the future, and we need to get this nailed down.
I agree, but I think it has to be a second workshop. I just don't think we can ask this board to make a decision with people coming before us about who our attorney will be and what their roles and responsibilities will be for the next six months, and then immediately go into a conversation and a decision about what our structure is going to be. I just, I-
I guess decision was wrong, because you can't make a decision in a workshop. Seek consensus surrounding where we want to head in the future. And there is no, we have no idea.
I know that. And I'm going to be, let other board members speak. Ms. Gins?
Well, I agree with Ms. Morgan, because the whole idea of having this three to six months is for us to really sit down and take a deep dive into what we can possibly do. I think having the temporary situation with the attorney will also give us insight as to, is this working well? Do we want to do it this way, or do we want to do it another way? I just, I don't think we would have enough insight at that point to make that decision. And I think that's why we, not that it's going to take us six months to do it, but I just think we need to step back for a minute, see how this is working, or see what else we need to do, or have staff or someone bring us more information. I know I wouldn't be ready to make that decision on the temporary attorney and then what we're going to do going forward. I just think I need more time.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, Ms. Fisher. Your hand wasn't up?
No, my hand, well, my hand was up here, but I wasn't raising it.
I think Ms. Vaughn had her hand.
Ms. Vaughn?
I have mine up.
Melissa's had it first, and then me.
Ms. Giavennelli's?
Ms. Giavennelli's finger.
My finger was up, I'm sorry. My thing is, I think we need to encourage to stay focused on the task at hand. So I agree with Ms. Morgan, but I do agree that we can't put it by the side. And six months will go by quickly, since we don't only meet once in July. So really, essential, it's not really six months, it's probably five. So I worry that we're not going to stay focused on having an attorney in the end of all this. So that's, I just want to encourage to stay focused on that, that's all.
How long is it going to take to hire an attorney?
It will take a couple months, and I am concerned, and I'll look over at Mr. Dotick here, that, you know, we have, the current school board and staff, school attorneys around the state are aware that Mr. Dotick is leaving, and I don't believe that anyone has expressed an interest or inquired about the position.
Well, I haven't solicited that information, but certainly, on a daily basis, as Mr. Williams, we have contact with attorneys around the state. I haven't been asked about it.
We need to smile more up here, so people want to come.
But I do, I do agree with Ms. Giavennelli that sooner is, the sooner we can get started, I mean, the better. And Ms. Patrica, I do think there's-
Ms. Fisher, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Morgan? Okay, so then, I just want to mention that if we do what we need to do for the imminent time, we can do that by the 23rd. I want to piggyback on something that Mrs. Morgan said a little bit earlier in the conversation, and that is, and I have called people around the state and spoken to people, I want to say that we, as a board, need to get our act together and become a functioning team before people are going to want to come and work for us. So we all have work to do, and I think we need to take the time and make the commitment either to do that or to get off the board. So that's my statement now. Ms. Vaughn?
Well, and I do want to respond to what Ms. Fisher said now also, but I was going to ask, could we move on to a consensus that we have a workshop next week focused on just the board attorney, and then look to, what would it be, like, two weeks after that to focus on the other issue? Because I agree with some of the comments that were made, that this is a really important decision, and we want to do it right in terms of the future permanent board attorney. And in response to what Ms. Fisher says, I honestly think that we are functioning the way a board should be functioning with differences of opinion, because only with differences of opinion do you have progress. And I don't think that any person worth his or her salt, I've heard a lot of the masculine pronoun out there, and we do have a lot of excellent women lawyers. I really don't see that as an issue, that people are going to say, well, we're not going to work for them, they just, they don't get along. I don't see that. But anyway, I am looking for a consensus on, to move it along on a focused workshop next week just on the board attorney issue.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I would like to seek consensus on doing what Ms. Vaughn just said, which is, we meet next week, we come up with a solution to our short-term problem, and it's our responsibility to direct the chair. We can direct the chair to say, we want a workshop in two weeks. We'll follow up the appointment of the attorney with another workshop. And we direct the chair to do that, and staff has already done all of the background work to lay something out for us so we can have that conversation in two weeks. So that's what I'm looking for consensus on.
Ms. Jordan?
Are we able to do both?
Yeah.
I mean, can we not just do both? Can Angela not go ahead and put that out there as well? So in the meantime, while we are deciding on who's going to take it as interim, that's already being put out there to see if any candidates are coming in.
Well, I think the issue there is, we don't know what the structure of that position is going to be, and that's where the board discussion needs to come in. Where I think we can walk and choose them at the same time, is we can discuss more than one issue at a workshop. I don't think it's going to take three hours to determine who we're going to hire on an hourly basis, and I think we can then jump to the next conversation.
Do you want to have a job description?
We do, and you guys have been sent that, but I think the conversation before was, if you want to change that job to, let's say, a general counsel position, then that would require a new job description. So that's part of the, so one of my questions for today is, what additional information do any of you need in order to make a decision about the structure? I've provided, and Mr. Williams has reviewed the proposal from a year ago and is comfortable and, I think, supports that, right, Mr. Williams?
That is correct.
So, and then we've kind of shared information on what other districts are doing. So I guess the question would be, what additional information might you need, if any, to move forward with that conversation?
Okay, I'm sorry. So what you had sent us prior, we just need to get it, work on that, get it back to you, and have a conversation again over that.
Correct, unless there's additional information that I'm not aware of that the board desires.
Ms. Morgan?
So then, I think it boils down to what the new board members want, because you're absolutely correct. We had this conversation, the old board had this conversation, and pretty much had, I think, come to a conclusion. So the question is, what do the new board members need beyond what they've already been provided? And if they are comfortable moving forward a week from now, then I withdraw my objections.
Comfortable moving forward with what?
Well, with what they've got so far. I mean, Dr. Pruitt has just said she wants to know in order to prepare.
Okay, to move forward with a discussion on the next steps for permanent.
Exactly.
Yeah. So can we do that? Can we handle both subjects in one meeting, or?
I don't think it's that we're not capable of doing both. I don't know, my mind is shifting, that we focus on our immediate need, and I think in the process of even listening to the attorneys and going through that process in that meeting, it may give us some other ideas as to what we actually want in the long run. And I don't know, I'm just, if you all want to do it all at one time, then we would have to have staff give us all the information about the possible candidates and also the information about the job description, and we would have to be prepared to discuss all of that at that meeting.
Another potential consideration, I mean, I think the first thing is the structure, because that's going to determine the job description. From there, we could also have a discussion around hiring a search firm, or we can do like we did before, and we can do our all-out what we do, see the candidates that we get, and if we're not satisfied, then hire a search firm that just delays the process by about 30 days. So that's another consideration.
What candidates would we be discussing, other than the hourly rate ones?
No, that's what I mean. The workshop would be basically to discuss the three possibilities for our temporary firm, and the job description, which, well, you guys will have time to bring that in the workshop next week.
You have it, but I'm happy to resend everything.
Okay, so is, when you were talking about the previous board, is what you're bringing what the previous board already decided?
Correct. Along with a suggestion for changing the structure of the legal department. So do we stick with what we have now, or do we change?
Well, I think it's easy enough. We're going to have the workshop the end of next week about attorneys. Now, whether that expands into, is just about what they bring to us with the temporary, or expands into talking about what we're going to do in the future, we're having the workshop, you know, we can go ahead and discuss.
Hold on, his hand was up first.
Well, go ahead, go ahead, but I'd-
So this current board, on March 14th, got the information from Dr. Pruitt regarding the structure, the proposal for chief counsel and staff. We've had an opportunity to review it. I had a note that we would send suggestions to Mr. Dotick or Dr. Pruitt. I don't know whether we've all done that or not, but we have that information. We also have a copy of the current or the updated job description. So if we are going to have the workshop and decide on our imminent need, which is a board attorney to be here for meetings, et cetera, and we know that we're going to pay that as an hourly rate, I can't understand why we could not take another look at the information we've already received as a current board and be ready to say, Dr. Pruitt, this is the structure that we agree on. We could have that discussion, shouldn't take that long, and then we can agree on that so that she can move forward in updating the job description and doing whatever is necessary if that's the case.
Do we ready to do consensus?
She's doing it more eloquently than I did.
Well, and I'm sorry to throw a fly in the mix here, but if you're talking about fixing an immediate need, and you're talking about doing it next week, I think, you know, that's fine, because you're looking at a compressed week. Remember, you have a holiday on Friday. Staff is involved in a very important principals' meeting on Thursday. You know, opportunity to have a lengthy workshop is, you know, it's not as much opportunity with this short of notice. If you're getting into the discussion about chief counsel, recall, last time we had a meeting, that's when it starts to blend the two models, and I express some concern. If you're going to do that, we have to more clearly define lanes, which means that staff has to, you know, I think, weigh into that, and that's a more extensive conversation. So I just put that out there for your consideration.
So you're saying staff can't be available for more extensive conversation next week?
Well, I'm going to say, I'm going to say it's going to be difficult to make that happen based on the compression of that week and also current meetings that have already been scheduled that are pretty important, you know. Principals' meeting involves, you know, more than 100 people and the whole leadership team in the beginning.
I'm coming back, Ms. Fisher. And I'm simply saying that, at that workshop, that we decide as a board what our opinion is about the structure, period. Not getting into any other lanes or additional job descriptions or anything like that. Just to decide so that Dr. Pruitt has that information, that basic information, if I may. Thank you. Anyone else down here? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, when I, Angela and I, I had emailed her after she, or Dr. Pruitt, after she had sent the information, and I don't have that document pulled up, but that was from a year ago, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, almost a year ago.
Correct.
And what I wrote back is that I recalled that at least a couple of us, when we discussed this at an earlier workshop, wanted to retain a lawyer who would not potentially have a conflict of interest between loyalty, confidentiality with the board and the superintendent. So I think there's been, in, with the seating of several new individuals, I think there's been a significant change in board attitude from a year ago. And I noticed, if my memory is correct, there were some blended jobs, where they're not where they were-
The issue was, if there was a chief counsel,
Yeah.
That was what the issue is, and how that, how that structure of that individual would work. And then I think another change from a year ago is that now Mr. Dotick has been in that position and has some thoughts around the work duties and the level of work versus the staff attorney versus the board attorney, and how time is spent. And so I do think there's some additional, you know, considerations since last year. I think, however, in terms of how the work is grouped, once you get below that, whether it's board attorney, chief counsel, whatever you're going to call it, that is still relevant information in terms of where we're spending our time on legal services.
Ms. Gins?
I agree with, Dr. Atkins brought up something that a lot of our conversation was, whether in our other workshop, were we going to restructure the whole format of the attorney to have a group or separate individual, and that's what we went around about. And I think that what that means is to bring that information to us is going to mean something from staff saying, this is what this one looks like, and this is what that looks like. Am I, am I correct, either Mr. Williams or Dr. Pruitt? Because, I mean, I don't know that I would be able to make a decision in saying, okay, Mr. Williams, you're just going to work over there by yourself, and, you know, do not touch our attorney, or, you know, you guys can cross over here, but don't cross over there. I don't feel I have enough of that information to make that decision. And that decision is going to definitely determine what we say as far as this is the attorney or attorney group that we need. I think that's where the key factor is, and it means work from you guys saying and explaining why you do need somebody to help you do this, or somebody to do that. Not that we can't do it in a workshop, but I think it takes more time for them to come up with that piece. Am I correct, Mr. Williams?
No, I agree with what you're saying, and I think, you know, that's fair. I think, you know, this isn't an exact science, which is why the districts across the state do it differently. I mean, I think you could pick 10 districts and find different ways of handling it. I think what, I guess, we're trying to acknowledge is that, given the growth of our district within the last several years and where we're headed, the number of legal issues has substantially increased since the model that we currently have was put in place. And keeping in mind that at one point, we had actually three attorneys. We're actually less than what we had years ago. And analyzing that, again, I think Mr. Dotick offers great feedback, being, having served both roles and understanding what both roles entail. But certainly, we will provide any sort of feedback or information that we can with respect to, you know, not only our roles, but the function of additional attorneys. I think the emphasis being that, you know, the more, you know, adding additional attorneys will allow us to have more flexibility. For example, if someone is missing from the office, having someone that is versed, at least in a minimum, in- having someone that is versed, at least in a minimum in those, in certain areas, to be able to cover. Right now, our covering situation is kind of, if he's out, I'm in, I'm over there, but then who's over here? And so I think the, you know, I can provide the data and trust me, I'm collecting it in terms of, you know, the amount of work. I mean, there's a spaniel amount of work and being able to have assistance on specific matters. For example, I was in an IEP yesterday, but that was a continuation from a previous IEP. So in total, I think I sat in that IP for six hours. So that's six hours where I'm not working on every other issue that we have in the school district. So again, just figuring out a system, I think the district would be better served, not only from that experience, but also the flexibility of having attorneys specialize and really, you know, what I always like to say, be state subject matter experts in those particular areas. The goal would be to have the best attorneys in the state for that matter, if that can be accomplished. And the only way you can do that is kind of have additional attorneys to be able to distribute the work equitably and efficiently, so.
All right, well, we're up on time, up against a time deadline on this subject. So why don't we have Ms. Gittens state her suggestion for consensus? And if we get consensus, great. If not, we'll have somebody else state a suggestion for consensus.
With consideration with, for what the superintendent said, next Thursday is out, next Friday is a short, and it's before holiday. I don't know if you guys want to do that then.
And just, can I interject? Wednesday's the earliest you can do it because of the advertising requirements.
Exactly. So it would have to be Wednesday. And for you all to gather everything other than just selecting the attorneys in that short time, I am suggesting that for the Wednesday, if we can do it, just to look at the thought of which attorney firm we will select. So we can vote on that on the 23rd. And then after the 23rd, we can already set up a workshop to discuss and hear input from the attorneys about options for moving forward and we can go on from there. Because that second part, the option moving forward, is not just affecting the board, it's going to affect the whole district.
Can we have consensus on that? Thumbs up, thumbs down, can live with it? We have two can live with and four thumbs up. Mary, got it?
So we are scheduling next Wednesday, the 17th. Is that okay with both of you attorneys? Just for the one issue and then we'll schedule another one for the following.
Thank you for your time and for your future time.
This is, I just want to be, are we all clear on what you expect from us to bring forward? I just, I don't want to make sure we're meeting your expectations.
I don't know what I, I'm not really at all clear on what we're doing. So I think all we're doing is deciding on who we're hiring as an hourly attorney at our next meeting. Is that correct?
On the 17th and then the week after that, we will schedule a workshop to go in depth, which gives them more time as well.
I think from our end, what we can provide is obviously the background information on the firms. And obviously, they'll be here to articulate or add to whatever is packaged together. I offered them the opportunity to put something together because, you know, just going to someone's website, you know, is basic information. But really, I want them to be able to highlight their experience in this area as well as the public sector so that you feel comfortable with the selection that you're going to make.
Ms. Wong, we're up against a time delay.
I think it goes beyond just the selection. We talked earlier about the logistics of limiting. So I think that would be another important part of that agenda.
In terms of how the hours are going to be used and how?
In terms of how the hours, so we don't, $300,000 bill.
Mr. Ivanelli?
My only question is to you, Brian. Was any of these firms interested in joining Lake County School District at all? Just out of curiosity.
No. Believe, oh, Mr. Penley.
Mr. Penley did apply for a position previously.
Okay, that's good enough. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Mr. Herman, I think you're next for AMI Kids. Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams. Did I call him Mr. Herman?
Mr. Herman. It's one of the names.
Mr. Williams, I'm horrible with names. But I got your, is that right? I got your first name. It's southern to call people like, Ms. Chris, Mr. Herman. So I was southern appropriate.
You're really fishing near. It works, it's all right.
My sincere apologies, I am really, really bad with names.
He looks like a mad seahorse.
You have a good order, right, Mr. Ivanelli? You weren't here on the meeting straight. You have a good order, right?
Good afternoon. Approximately 14 months ago, I participated in a conference call hosted by the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice. During that call, Florida Department of Juvenile Justice announced that they would be terminating or allowing the contract with several AMI Kids day treatment to expire. That, one of those AMI Kids program was here in Southwest Florida. Then approximately three weeks later, there was another conference call. At that time, they had expressed that they wanted to extend AMI Kids Southwest and all the other day treatments. Instead of letting the contract expire in June 2018, they extended it out to 2019. The reason that they were going to allow the contract to expire was that they were looking for an organization or a company to actually go into the communities and provide the substance abuse, mental health and vocational training. To do that, if they did that, they were looking for more kids to attend those counseling sessions and also those training. If more kids attend those within the community, they were looking to reduce the recidivism and also the reoffending rate. When they allowed the contract to expire, AMI would no longer be a school. They would no longer be a private school, a charter school or a public school.
So just to clarify, on that first slide, it said terminating. And actually, the proper termination should be that the contract is running out at the end of this time.
The students that are attending AMI ranges from age 12 to 18. Again, they're not court ordered to attend AMI school. They're court ordered to attend for substance abuse, mental health, counseling and vocational training. Now, once Florida Department of Juvenile Justice allowed the contract to expire, then who would provide that counseling for them? Currently, it is out, we've been told that Eckerd Connect is a nonprofit organization that was awarded the contract. And they will be providing the mental health, substance abuse counseling and vocational training. They will go into the communities to provide that. To my knowledge, the students at AMI have not, are not aware that the contract is expired. Certainly, AMI knows it. AMI Inc. and AMI Southwest Florida. I've also engaged in discussion with AMI Southwest Florida for the last 12, 14 months about my recommendation to the board that we also allow their contract to expire with the board. And that is based on, again, if they are not, Department of Juvenile Justice, if they're not awarded a contract with them, then they're not a school. Again, I want to make sure we know that it's not only AMI Southwest Florida, there are many day treatment programs around the state of Florida that they're going to allow to expire. Now, what does that mean to us? Students that are at AMI, they'll return back to the school district. Again, Eckerd Connect will provide, still provide the substance abuse, the mental health counseling and the vocational training. It means that one or two kid may return back to a public school and they can return back to a charter school or they can return back to private school or virtual school. What the plan is, is to make sure I personally meet with the parent and the kid and make a recommendation of where they need to go. It would only be a recommendation. The parent and the student can choose to go wherever they want to go. If they choose to come back to public school, then they will go to student enrollment. AMI Kids Southwest does have some of the inventory. They have some computers, laptops. They also have some smart board. We will collect all that information, all those, all that equipment. In addition to that, AMI student queue folders will be collected and brought back to the district. I talked a little bit about DJJ allowing the contract to expire. What we also did, we took a look at the academic progress of the kids down at AMI. What you're looking at now is the first semester, 18, 19 school year. AMI is 663. They had 72 kids, first semester, generated 15 credits. Those 72 kids had opportunities to generate, each kid 3.5 credits. They only generated 15. Also, you have the other schools that are on my watch. 653 is Pace, 661 is Detention, 666 is Price, 667 is Jail Core, 682 is Vint Smith Center. We also went back to school year 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18, and then as we stated before, the first semester, 18, 19. We looked at each grade level, the number of students that were in each grade level. The total number of students for school years 15, 16, including summer school, is approximately 129. If you look at the bottom of the chart total, the total number of 16, 17 was 114. In 17, 18, the total was 114. And the first semester of 18, 19, 70. From that point, what we did, we looked at the core classes, how many credit was generated in each grade level of core classes. Math, ELA, science, social study, intensive reading. And we also looked at the number of credits that were generated each grade level. 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18, and again in the first half of 18, 19. Then what we did, we took a look at the number of credits. Remember before I said that they can generate a minimum of 3.5 credits? And we looked at the number of students. And we went to AMI. In 15, 16, 129. We simply just multiplied 3.5 times 129. That's 451 possible credits for the students. The number of credits that were actually earned by the students was 83.5. Then we looked at 16, 17, same thing. We multiplied by 3.5 times 114 students. The number of credits that was earned by 114 students was 82. Same thing for 17, 18, and then to date, 18, 19. This is what it looks like on a bar graph. The blue is the total number of students. Earned is just credit opportunity and actual credit earned. Then we took a look at state assessment at the students at AMI. And there were very few students that earned at level three. I'll open it up now for questions.
Ms. Gittens?
Are you with the suggesting not to renew the contract?
I am suggesting to allow AMI contract to expire.
To expire, okay.
Yes, expire.
Questions, comments?
I did have the opportunity to go with Mr. Williams out here. And the day that we just happened to go, they had no idea that we were going there. And when we got there, it was around 10-ish and we looked where the kids at. Well, they had transported the kids in, they ate breakfast and then they sent them home. And I just could not believe it. I had to re-ask that question. I said, "You sent them home after breakfast? You brought them in and fed them and you sent them home?" And they said, "Yes." And I think that day there were maybe, when you asked how many people were there? I think they said, what, 12, 13?
13.
But there was no education on that day. They just brought them in, fed them and sent them back on a bus for another hour. It's ridiculous. No, he had no answer for us.
Ms. Fisher? So AMI employed their own teachers, right? They were not district teachers. Right. And so over the last few years, with that lack of academic progress, what was our position in that, since these are essentially our kids?
Okay. What my position was and the district position was, I had conversation with AMI staff locally. Also had conversation with AMI office about my concerns about the kids not making any academic progress. What they tried to do to, I guess, interject certified teachers was that they went out and they hired edgenuity to make the teachers certified and place the students on the computers. My issue with that is, as you know, most of the students down there are at risk. Most of them read below a sixth grade level. And if you're going to do edgenuity for original credit, the kids have to be able to read. So that was my big issue with that. I started to put in the agreement with AMI some goals, some things that they had to accomplish academically, which they were not doing.
Right. So I know the progress that you've helped Pace make, so that's why I asked that question. But, so I'm anticipating with this contract being terminated, that when the kids return to our school and they get their counseling and intervention from Eckerd Connects, they'll probably have more of an opportunity to have some academic success.
And I'm anticipating that also.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
You mentioned, well, it says in here about the at-risk students and that they will have IEPs and all of that. What?
A student that is identified as an ESE student would have an IEP. Those are the only students that would have an IEP. They would have a behavior plan if it's something that is specific to behavior. But that's only for identified behavior students. So our schools would not necessarily have a specific plan that they would be required to create for a student. What would happen is that the majority of these students would come in. What would happen is that the majority of these students would come in lower performing than what we'd, we would anticipate. And so naturally, they would go through our MTSS process. We would have interventions in place in order to help secure their, to increase their level of success with academics. I did have the opportunity to go and visit myself yesterday. And they had edgenuity, but I walked into an intensive reading course. And as one of the things that I tried to express to the individuals that I met with yesterday, along with Mr. Williams, is our need for the majority of these students to be able to complete high school within four years and a semester, that that's the expectation from a high school student. And the intensive reading course that I stepped into, they were talking about the difference between fiction and nonfiction, which would be a very elementary concept. And I was, I was concerned about that. I expressed my concern. And I also expressed my concern about the level of completion, as Mr. Williams has clearly indicated here, the lack of credits being accrued by our students. You know, even if it means that we were to work on one content with edgenuity, if that's the mechanism, having a blended model of having a certified teacher being able to work with them. So we, we believe that the, the right thing to do is to allow this contract to expire as DJJ had put in place. And that doesn't mean that AMI kids, that there's not another opportunity to look at for them, but for us, we believe that the academic prowess for our students right now is to, to follow through with the contract.
So how, how will this affect the students? Seemingly, they are not up to par with the number of credits or the aptitude of their peers when they enter a school. And first of all, how does that work as far as like school choice, or are they placed, or are they, is it suggested that they would go to a charter school where that's all they would do? I mean, how, how do we decide where they go, in which niche, and which school?
What would happen is I will contact the parents personally, either by a written letter or a phone call, and invite them in with the student. We will review their academic history. If they have an IEP, the staffing specialist will come in on it, and then we will make a recommendation as to best avenue for them to continue their education. It may mean that they are coming back to a public school, and if so, we'll notify that public school and let them know that they need some services, some extra services to help them catch up. Or if they're going to a charter school, we will try to notify that charter school, same thing about the services that they may need, but it would be strictly the parent choice. If they go to a public school, they will come back in to student enrollment, and then they'll be assigned to a school.
Okay. So no actions required by us, right? This is just briefing, letting us know what's happening?
Thing to let you know.
Ms. Jordan, do you have a comment?
No, the only thing I was going to say, there are, some of those children are eighteen, so they are adults.
Correct.
That would be another thing that you have to deal with.
Correct. And normally, I'm normally the transition contact for the district, for DJJ students. And every student that comes back into our district from other counties, from DJJ, make a recommendation for where they need to have, where they need to go for an education. If they're eighteen or older, and they have very little credits, the normal recommendation is either a charter school, adult education, and also job workforce.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
So what's the data that these children, students, continue their education and get a diploma?
From AMI is not too good. From other centers, for example, Pace this year is graduating, I believe, seven students. On time, with their cohorts, passed all the state assessments, graduating them. For ones that are coming from out of county, most of the ones that are coming from out of county are from a residential facility, from out of county coming back to us in Lee County. Most of them are either freshmen or juniors. Many of them come back with a GED.
That's awesome. Okay, that's good. So this question is for Dr. Creel. So would this, these students be something that would be a possibility for the, that accreditation, or am I saying it right, Academy?
Acceleration Academy.
Thank you, thank you.
Again, those are, the Acceleration Academy, if we bring that forward, that would be for students who have dropped out of our school district, that they are helping to recover. So it wouldn't be a choice, and that, again, is, are things that we're investigating.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Gins.
So you know other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Herman Williams?
Herman is fine.
And I think Dr. Creel, you're going to stay there, right? And we're going to bring, I want to call her Dr. Lori Brooks, but she's not.
Not yet.
Ms. Brooks up for our mental health update.
Good afternoon, school board members, Dr. Adkins and Mr. Dodig. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today on the specific topic of school-based mental health. Today's discussion will include a discussion of concepts related to school-based mental health, and specifically, how the school district is implementing the opportunities set forth in Senate Bill 7026 to serve the mental health and wellness needs of our students. As you're well aware, Senate Bill 7026 set forth a couple of requirements that were related to school safety and school-based mental health. And in some regards, they're related, and yet they have two separate initiatives in the same bill. And so they're highly specialized, unique areas. And the legislation lives in two areas of our district, so Rick Parfit with school safety, and also in the student services arena with mental health. And we collaborate daily and many times per day. So as you can see, it set forth some initiatives and for mental health, a recurring allocation. And at least ninety percent of this allocation must be expended on specific planned elements that are related to direct services to students. And it encourages the maximization of third-party collaborative resources in the community. So our focus with the mental health plan requirements is on evidence-based mental health practices. And this, as set forth in statute, needs to include the provision of mental health services to students with mental health or co-occurring substance abuse diagnoses, but also students that are at high risk of potentially being diagnosed. So the early intervention piece in, within the schoolhouse. Coordination of such services, so this would be inter-agency coordination with our school-based mental health professionals, and sometimes with multiple agencies, including DCF and other community and state agencies. Also, it includes the direct employment of service providers or a contract-based collaboration or partnership with one or more local community mental, excuse me, mental health programs. You have a lot of this in your PowerPoint, and in the interest of time, I will not cover all of these points. However, the case for school-based mental health actually started in the late nineties and the early two thousands. And not all states are far ahead with this initiative, but some are further than others. And Florida is pretty much at the inception of this journey as far as legislative initiatives and related funding. So we know our students show up to school.
At its inception, does that mean we're far behind other states?
With other states, we align with some of them, and yes, we are behind. Nationally, we're at the beginning. And some districts in Florida are further ahead, but as far as state initiatives and funding, we're, we just, we just got there in the last twelve months.
You can't hear Mary whispering, "Yes, we're far behind." You can't hear her whispering that over here.
So we know that students come to school, and schools therefore are the location where many of our services will be provided. We also know that we have a growing and unmet need for mental health services, and yet today, we're further along than we were a year ago. We also know that the foundational learning is critical, and that happens in the schoolhouse, and that left unaddressed are students that really could benefit from early intervention and be back on the path to wellness. If, if it's left unaddressed, they end up in treatment. So we're a natural place to provide services. We also understand that prevention and intervention are less costly than treatment, and that we have school-employed mental health professionals that are engaged in this good work. We also know that mental health at schools and wellness are essential to creating and sustaining safe environments. And we need to work in a continuum of services to effectively address the breadth of student need. So what are school-based mental health services? Well, according to Senate Bill 7026 and following evidence-based models, it's a broad spectrum of assessment, prevention, intervention, and postvention. It's essential to the school's ability to ensure a safe and healthy learning environment, support our students, and respond to mental health problems and promote academic success. And ideally, we dovetail with community-based services so that together and collectively we're a system of care. This graphic you actually received as a separate file, so you could see it in its larger context. And this is a representation of Florida's system of supports, and this was the graphic that districts received to illustrate when we were engaging in this work last spring, the continuum of universal mental health promotion, which is in the green area, selective and indicated intervention, which is the yellow-to-orange area. So to truly be effective, mental health services are provided within a positive student engagement framework. And this is the reason our student engagement team, which was previously called student services, is key to this work, especially in the green area and that foundational, universal prevention layer. Our team has expertise in positive preventions, and this includes social-emotional learning, positive behavior support, health services, multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS for students with academic and behavioral, they need intervention. We have graduation initiatives, substance use prevention, bully prevention, and school social work, school psychological services, and school counseling services. And that's just a short list. We have so much more available in our universal prevention layer. And when we focus our attention on the universal prevention, these are services that increase protective factors for all students. Examples of universal prevention is, again, social-emotional learning, PBIS, character education, positive relationships and positive school culture, restorative practices and trauma-informed practices, and facets that create and sustain a safe and supportive school environment, and actively engage our healthy students. And this also includes youth mental health awareness and assistance training for school personnel. Comprehensive health education is embedded into elementary physical education and science curriculum, into the middle school health course and peer counseling course, as well as the science curriculum, and through the high school HOPE course. Comprehensive school counseling programs that are data-driven and informed are also critical because they identify gaps and where we need to fill those gaps for students, and also universal prevention for all students. So you can see the work of all school personnel is in this tier-one universal prevention layer. So I like to say that prevention is everybody's business, and we all collectively play a role. And without this prevention, too many students are serviced in the orange, the yellow and orange tiers, and they end up with the need for intervention. So selective and indicated intervention are for students that need additional opportunities for support. So the rest of this presentation will focus in the yellow and orange tiers, because this is where the work and the allocation in Senate Bill 7026 rests. I won't read to you anymore. That was so comprehensive in what I wanted to express that I actually had to read my notes to you. So for the rest of this presentation, I'm probably telling some of you, and maybe all of you, things you already know, so I'll try to be very brief. The graphic on the right represents our student engagement team and our major roles in our department. And we talk about that comprehensive school-based mental health increases protective factors because these are the factors that help students either stay on the path of mental health and wellness, or help them return to those, that area when they're struggling. These are the areas that we can help leverage and maximize in a student so that they can help us to help them best. And then we also want to decrease barriers to learning, because as we know, mental health and wellness and prevention help our learners come to school ready to learn. So who provides school-based mental health services? We have our school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists. They are in statute detailed as our master's level and above, school-based mental health professionals. And our school nurses play a critical role because they recognize somatic complaints that tie potentially to mental health concerns. So collectively, these individuals provide prevention, intervention, and crisis response, again remembering too, that prevention is so much larger than the professionals that I just detailed in the first bullet point. We connect families to the community mental and behavioral health when appropriate. However, there's a limit to what we can do in the school with our school-based mental health professionals. And this is where our allocation and our initiatives take us in the next step on that journey of helping families. One of the innovative practices that we put into place in our district is the school mental health team. We wanted our mental health professionals to have the opportunity to come around the table on a weekly basis and talk about students of concern. And as Mr. Parfit talks about connecting or collecting the dots and connecting the dots, that's what we're doing in relation to our students. If we have concerns that they may need more than kind of the typical support that we provide for social-emotional learning, and some of the lower level, going from the green into the yellow areas, these are students that may need mental health supports. So as we discuss them, we emphasize in these teams a problem-solving model, and we have that out, it's outlined for them. And they, they do an appraisal of the data. We talk about the ABCs, attendance, behavior, course performance, presenting factors and behaviors. We talk to parents and students, if they're age-appropriate. We ask them what their own concerns are. And then we determine if assistance is needed, and if it enters the realm of mental health so that we can then provide that. So these teams structure our comprehensive school mental health services because they too coordinate across programs and available supports and services within the school. They capitalize on resources in the community and in the school so that we have, again, the systems of care approach, and we can also, and we do, evaluate the effectiveness to scale up, maintain, or scale down for a student that's receiving tiered services related to mental health within the school. So as a team, when we were planning this, the Department of Education actually provided district convening meetings to help districts understand the, the most appropriate model to follow when building their mental health allocation plan. And we used a, the framework for Safe and Successful Schools. This is a model that has guided districts through this process, and Florida chose this model. It's a collaborative framework developed by the, the American School Counseling Association, the National Association for School Social Work, the National Association for School Psychologists, school principals. It's multi-agency. So we had leadership that built this model, and all of the student services associations as well. And it recommends that districts integrate collaborative services, implement multi-tiered systems of support, improve access to school-based mental health supports, integrate school safety and crisis prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery, balance physical and psychological safety, employ positive school discipline, allow for consideration of context, and acknowledge that this process is a long-term effort that takes patience and commitment. and acknowledge that this process is a long-term effort that takes patience and commitment. This is everything we've experienced this year as we've put this into place, so the model was actually very effective for us to follow. And here are the components of this year's mental health plan that we have been implementing. We have been implementing the school-based mental health teams. We trained them in late November, and you may wonder, why did we have to wait so long? Well, our mental health allocation across the state arrived on October 1st, so we had some delay, and that goes along, too, with the deadlines for plan submission. So the legislation was passed, and then they had to give districts time to implement it, and then we had to go ahead. When our money arrived, we had to staff and hire and train, so we had to move quickly. We hired 10 new school social workers. We needed to increase days at school sites. Our social workers also are the facilitators of wraparound services for students and family. I call them the family systems people. And then we also hired some additional school psychologists because we need their specialized skill set for some of the interventions we need to identify. Now, you may wonder, where are our school counselors in all of this? And I will tell you that our challenge was, how do we build on what we have, and how do we ensure the missing components that were either absent or less than where they needed to be in schools were filled? And we don't have enough money to address the missing pieces, all of them. We have a beginning. And so we have school counselors in every school, and we looked at how far and where our money could go, and where we really needed, when we used this evidence-based framework, where were we lacking in the greatest term? And as we were analyzing and talking with school leaders and looking at our data, we realized the school-to-home-to-agency connection was a piece that was really missing, and how do we shore that up first? Because we have school counselors in every building, and yes, they're overwhelmed, but we're making strides in our ratios. We have social workers and psychologists, and yes, they're overwhelmed, and we're making strides, but the allocation allowed us to provide a full-time social worker at every high school, increase days at our middle schools, and we know that mental health challenges typically present in ages 12 to 18. We also have a full-time licensed mental health counselor on campus at Success Academy. We are still trying to hire a full-time school psychologist. We are also trying to hire our four psychologists. Now, Amy Clark is here, and she has been really recruiting psychologists to our district, and thank you, and we're looking better for next year as far as staffing those positions. Our full-time licensed mental health counselor just started at Success Academy, and that is going well. And we have been developing community partnerships through Memoranda of Understanding. Our first one was with Salus Care so that parents do not need to walk into Salus Care and wait. Through our Memorandum of Understanding with Salus Care, our school-based mental health teams will make a referral if the parent desires to go there, and everything is done on an appointment basis so that they can show up at that designated day and time and receive their services. And then we were staffing three district intervention support specialists for behavior needs because our elementary schools especially have been asking for some support and coaching with our younger students that may need additional behavior support. So our leveraging community partnerships, this is by no means a comprehensive list, but we do have many programs in place, and we continue to work and expand these programs. And we have meetings scheduled in the next few weeks to have another meeting to talk about expanded services in our schools, and we're trying to maximize multiple funding sources. So I know in the interest of time, I'm going to move things ahead. We have a $375,000 grant to teach youth mental health first aid to 10 schools, but we also have -- this is the Department of Education's chosen program, so we're using those 12 trainers trained through our grant to also train our district staff under the Department of Education training component. And we're seeking other potential funding sources. And so the youth mental health first aid training is our program that we are training our staff using. And then we also -- this was not part of the allocation, but -- and I won't click on this, but you can in your PowerPoint. We developed a mental health and wellness portal on leeschools.net for all stakeholders. It's got several -- click on it? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm trying to hurry. I know you've had a long meeting. Where's my pointer? Okay. And this was really a labor of love from multiple people on the student engagement team, and also Laura Howard, former student of mine, our webmaster, put this all together for us. So this is for all stakeholders. You can see, I'll click on childhood trauma. They have -- we have a variety of different topics available, and anyone can go here and read more and get some assistance about these different topics. And it's growing. We keep adding more and more topics. So this is -- we wanted a service to the community to be part of what we do in our district. So we have a saying in our area, we're running a marathon rather than a sprint, and we have to remind each other of that because we've had many successes in a short period of time. We've also experienced challenges. When I talk to other districts, they're all experiencing the same challenges. We were trying to build the plane as we were flying it and take it on a shakedown cruise, and now we're really trying to move forward and work out the kinks and continuously improve. So we will annually assess our outcomes, and we are getting ready to deploy a needs assessment to our schools and assess where we are filling their gaps and what else we need to be doing. And we will continue meeting with community partners and seeking additional funding. There's two other things I just need to leave you with because we're really proud of this. We have added additional training next year for school-based staff, and this is QPR Gatekeeper Suicide Prevention Training. Trauma-sensitive schools and informed practices, we've had, and we continue to offer to schools, but we're growing the trainings so that we've got additional trainings for schools. And we are -- we have Prepare Crisis Response training available, and we are exploring peer training for mental health first aid and suicide prevention for our students to learn how to peer-support each other and then connect their peers or talk to an adult about it and make sure their peers are not left in an unsafe situation. I really appreciate your patience because I know you've been here a long time today, so I tried to hurry.
Ms. Fisher?
Okay. I didn't have my hand up, but I want to thank you, Lori, and the whole team for the work you've done. It is a work in progress, but you have built an excellent foundation. Thanks to Laura Howard for the website. It is really one of the best things I've seen a district do in a long time. I know that everything that you're doing with the mental health plan is integrated with the comprehensive health education. A lot of the things are enmeshed together, so I think as we continue to enhance our implementation of all that, we're only going to see more preventive efforts and less need for intervention, hopefully, in the future. And so thank you. I know it's been a lot of hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Gaines?
And I thank you, too. You're doing an excellent job, always have. I have a question, though. The norm for, like, high schools' FTEs is approximately 1,800. We're building an addition at Lehigh Senior, which puts them over 25, and the MMM numbers are going to be over 2,000 as well, from what I understand. I don't know if Mr. Rickenbacher's still in there. He's back in the back. I know you're hiring additional staff, but how, with the mental health piece with the larger school, how do we -- how do you address that? How do you manage that issue? Because data usually shows that a smaller learning community is better for mental health issues. How are we balancing that along with creating the larger schools?
Do you want me to answer that, or would you like to? So I will use, I hope it's okay, Jackie Corey, forgive me. I'm going to use Lehigh Senior High School as an example of very creative staffing to support needs and ensure that, first, your school climate supports students. It makes them want to come to school and know it's a safe place to be. So I know they work diligently on school climate through the Lehigh way. So it starts really with that foundational layer, no matter what size your school is, as you know, because you taught in a large high school as well. The school climate really is critical. And also the prevention programs and ensuring that we have those pieces in place so students know what's good and right and true for them, and also where to go if they're struggling, and then staffing your counselors as much as you can. And I know Ms. Corey has had to get extremely creative to make that happen. And dividing your counseling caseloads a certain way so they have the same counselor for four full years, and they're not changing every grade level so that relationship can be there. The increase in social work, and this is why we really kept that at that district level for the family systems and the wraparound, is where we're going to need to, as a student engagement team, look at how we add positions, add additional layers, so we can keep that full-time social worker assigned to the high school. And some of our larger high schools actually supplement that as well so that they have additional social work services. And so that's one of the pieces that will be helpful, and as a district and through our mental health allocation. And if we see any increases through this budget cycle from the Department of Education and the legislature, that's what we look at, is the actual size of the school and how are we layering appropriately with personnel, the ratios and the support for that size of school.
Please, Ms. Ma.
And I'm going to just echo what's already been said. Thank you for all of that. Teachers were not mentioned as -- I know they're not part of the focus team on mental health, but of course, teachers are a huge part of this because they're really the first line when identifying some behaviors that might be red flags to teachers. So one thing that I do worry about is the larger sizes of schools and the larger class sizes. The other thing is, I know that starting in early childhood education, that curriculum deals extensively with social-emotional and those kinds of things. And you did mention our comprehensive health education being embedded. I heard you say "science" in some of the other courses, but I know that often it's the more specific academics that take center stage. So one thing that I'm concerned about is that in some of the classes that our students have, that they really aren't getting much of a focus on education, the kind of education that would be part of comprehensive health education. And also, I think you mentioned middle school health course, but that's not done in all the middle schools, right?
We have the certified health courses, but we also have a health course that meets the requirements, our state standards requirements. We also have some other team members here with us. Candace and Bethany are here that can speak to that specific question.
Because I'm just assuming that in our -- and I haven't looked at all the standards and that sort of thing, but I'm assuming that an important part of the education is for students maybe to understand what they're feeling, if they're feeling anxious or depressed, and also just the mere knowledge that, oh, what I'm feeling, I'm not the only one in the world feeling this.
While Candace is preparing to give you a response to that, I wanted to make sure that you knew that our teachers are going to have an opportunity to be trained, and Lori, would you like to explain a little bit about that?
Sure. We have trained probably -- I should have pulled that data. Last time I looked, we trained over 400 teachers, and we just had our cadre trained, and we deployed our first training right before holiday break in December. And now we're doing sometimes two to three trainings a week. And so they're learning about typical and atypical adolescent development, but then also how to approach a student that they're concerned about. And it could just be the student is -- their affect is different for a couple days. We want teachers to understand, and this is actually for all staff. And I always told teachers when I was school-based, as a counselor, you're my eyes and ears. You're my best referrals because I don't see all kids every day. And so through the youth mental health first aid training, they do have the opportunity to learn typical, atypical characteristics of development, and then how to approach a student, how to listen to them, and how to connect them to the mental health professionals in the building, but also some of the things that we can do. How do we exercise self-care? Who can tell us? We identify it ourselves. So engaging students in conversations about what works well for you and you want to relax, and helping them maximize those. I understand what you're saying, though, because I think you're asking about how do students know what they're feeling, how to identify it, and that they're not alone. And you're correct that the social-emotional learning starts in BPK, and it continues in a K to -- BPK to 12 continuum, and how are we emotion identification teaching those students, and how to work through that, and how do we keep that work going into middle school and high school?
And I think I've even seen some studies. Isn't there a study where young kids look at a picture of -- okay, they look at a picture, and often they can't even identify what emotion is being shown by the facial expression, which I find kind of shocking.
And that's where SEL standards and the work that Mr. Bradley has been doing with the larger student engagement teams help as well. That should be also implementing and continuing in its pre-K through 12 district-wide. Writ?
Yes. So one of the pieces, to speak specifically to the middle school, is when the comprehensive health plan was adopted June 2000 -- July 2017, one of the pieces was sixth grade having an option for two courses. So either having that health course that has all of those health standards in there, part of them being those social pieces as well as self-care. But if we didn't have a health-certified teacher, schools utilize the peer counseling course because that's a semester course as well. Between the peer counseling course and then the standards being embedded within the science course and the physical education course, those three pieces meet the same requirements and needs as the health course does. So when we're looking specifically at middle school, that's what's happening in sixth grade to meet those requirements. So we've began -- we embedded them starting in the school year 2018-19 and continue to move in them. Right now, this year, since we have our new science curriculum, we're revamping. We had to update all of those plans for the science standards to reinclude those health standards where they are, but the health academic plans that are live on our site that teachers are utilizing have all of those pieces, and it's the Health IV course for sixth grade, Health V course for seventh grade, and Health VI course for our eighth grade students. But peer counseling is specific for our sixth-grade students.
Do you have any other questions? Did that answer your question? Okay.
Not seeing any other comments from the board, and we are running up against time restrictions, so.
Thank you.
I have some questions, but I'll just send them through the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you for your support and also for the support of Dr. Atkins, Dr. Kewell. And our team does not act -- this is not me, this is a whole team, so I just appreciate the opportunity on behalf of our team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think our last agenda item is Mr. Rickenbacher. Never forget that name.
Got any new board members? Dr. Atkins, Mr. Dodik?
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Dodig. Looking for the little projector.
Excellent. There you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. This month's capital update. First slide that you will see is the East Zone Middle School. We have all our permits in place. We successfully negotiated a contract, and we're waiting for the execution to come back for the superintendent to execute the final document with O.M. names Kimball. We've scheduled the contract negotiations with the architect next week, and shortly thereafter will be the building official, which makes up our Phase 1 design team. So we're right on cue. Next, and I'll make this quick for you, because I know you want to get out of here, East Zone Middle School MMM. We found that the Army Corps, the permit is drafted, it's ready to go. We're hoping within the next 30 days, we'll officially get that, at which time they're going to look for, within 30 days, for issuance of the actual Army Corps permit. The remainder of the mitigation that we purchased for that site will have to be encumbered. So I'll be speaking to our finance people to that at the Capitol meeting on this Thursday to acquire those funds. We've finally defined our academies, and I know that one board member had asked me specifically what those were, so I got you your answer. The four academies that have gone through Dr. Creel's division, plus CTE and the school, is cybersecurity, medical assisting, a culinary arts program, and a veterinary assisting program. And those are all based upon the work, current workforce needs, and the information that they've been able to gain throughout the business community and so forth. And there's a picture of our concepts. You can see there's the campus, a front view, and right below, you'll see what the concept is in our 3D graphic of the culinary academy. We have 100% design documents are done. They are preparing one last estimate and update. We're still about that $80 million in construction costs. We are shooting tentatively to come to you with a total project cost, hopefully the first week of August. I'd like to go sooner, but we're actually two months ahead of schedule. So if the Army Corps releases the permit, we're hoping that we have it in hand by June 1st, and I will release the contractor to put out the advertisements for their bids. It takes about six weeks to get the bids back and qualify it, hence coming to you with a board for total project cost with the GMP included, the last week of July to the first week of August, whatever board meeting works into that timeframe. And Lehigh Senior, this is old. Things are happening, they happen fast. All of the CMU walls are up on the addition, up to the second floor. The pre-cast plank, which creates the floor structure for the second-floor base and the roof, will be delivered starting tomorrow. There will be an immediate event, I believe, on Thursday out there regarding the halfpenny sales tax and the use of those funds in regards to this. The interior, the media center, we're ready for paint. So all that work that the principal allowed us to get in early and work during school hours, we're applying to finish painting flooring. We already did their interior dance room, so they're already using their special dance floor, so I think they're real excited about that. And we're on schedule. Franklin Parks and Cypress Lake Middle Schools, the revised custody reports have been completed. I've brought them forward to the superintendent. The next step is that he will have to bring it forward to you for concurrence, ultimately to be sent to DOE for approval. And I reached out to the previous district architect to find out that process, and that is how it goes, as part of statute, that we had to bring that forward. And Rob's a statute guy, but that's what he does. And that's it. We also, I didn't see that there was attached the capital update for the month. Were there any questions on that?
Thank you.
Mrs. Giavanelle, you had a question about the 1772?
Got it. I see it. Thank you.
You'll see that in the report. That was a deductive.
I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I always feel like we have a lot of balls in the air with regard to our capital projects, and I always feel like you're keeping them all up there for us.
Well, I have a cadre, as a previous. I have my cadre. This is it. You know, we'll manage.
You inspire confidence in your ability to wrap your arms around all of the details and produce them for us at very short notice. So thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment. Is there anybody who would like to give public comment? None. Board member comments. Ms. Fisher.
I have no comments right now. Thank you.
Ms. Giavanelle.
I have no comments, but do you mean to my good order, or do you want to wait for that?
That's next. Not next, but after.
I got you.
No, thank you. Ms. Gittens.
Yes, I have four additional signatures, thank you cards, to all of the legislators that we visited as a group. I do not have one for Dane Eagle, because I didn't go to that one, so between the three of you, you can do that one. And I would like to pass it along to everyone for signature that attended each of those. And then Susan is going to make sure that they get mailed out to their addresses. I think that's it. Oh, I would like to suggest that, and probably at our workshop next week, to bring up a couple of things for discussion. And one is a motion about our consent items on the board agenda for action items. I think we need to discuss a little bit more, having more information, so that we don't have to have as many pulls as we do. And one of the things I, in going back and looking at old, from the previous board, their minutes, and it was talking about the superintendent's recommendation, and I have a feeling I understand why it was taken out, but it may be something that we need to look at. I'm also going to suggest a couple of other things, but we can talk about it at that workshop. And I think that's all. Besides the fact that we had an excellent trip to visit legislators in Tallahassee, and I took some notes when we talked to the chancellor, I think I sent them out to everybody. If I haven't, I will. Very good conversations and very enlightening, and hopefully we learned a lot. We have requested that the chancellor and the governor, when they roll out the strategic plan process in September, we have invited them several times to come here to do it. So hopefully they will follow up, and we'll be able to host that particular event.
Ms. Ma.
I do not. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan. I do. So following up on what Ms. Gittens had to say, first of all, I think this was a good trip for us with our new lobbyist. She came in a year ago, but it was right in the middle of session. She arranged for us to meet with the governor's staffers, who oversee the budget appropriation for Governor DeSantis. I thought that was very positive. We also had, as the chair mentioned, a great conversation with Jacob Oliva, the public schools chancellor. I was relieved to hear his comment that effectively they are stripping the Common Core name, but they are committed to Florida standards going forward. I think the difference will be that, and the way he is going to handle the process for critiquing the standards, I think is very smart. He's basically putting out the standards, and people are welcome to comment about a standard, as opposed to commenting about Common Core. And so I think that, to that extent, we're separating, as Chris said at one point, the politics from the product. And also, I was very relieved to hear him accept responsibility for the state to provide the resources that will support teachers and parents when the standards are reintroduced. It sounds like they're going to make a significant investment, at least in terms of internet software support for parents and teachers. My takeaway from this session is that there are two things happening. One is they're trying to make every educational institution receiving public funds accountable, so they're trying to level the playing field in terms of accountability. And they're also, but the stride towards increasing support for non-traditional public education continues. And, you know, every effort is being made to transfer from the state budget to the private sector. And so, you know, that is a big fight we have. We've had it, we have it this year, and we are clearly going to have it going forward. There is nothing to slow that momentum. When I went to the Dunbar Business Advisory Committee meeting not too long ago, they were talking about the fact that in that particular group, they're talking about creating business advisory boards for manufacturing and aviation. And it made me think, maybe we should be talking about, with our focus on career and technical academies, we should be thinking about some of these academies that we have at the different schools, and creating advisory boards, if only for the purpose of educating the public, as well as getting their input. I was really delighted to see the Richard M. Schultz Foundation grant for the STEM Program for Teachers this summer. I don't know who's behind, that wasn't the foundation, was it? Was that? Anyway, I was really pleased to see that. And then coming out at the same time with the notice about the science fair and how successful our students were at the state level this year. Clearly, you know, Lee Hughes has been working hard for a long time to engage folks in that, and it's, you know, it's gelling. And the last comment I will make is that we got a letter from the auditor general saying they were closing out item number three on our operational audit. And I'm saying this publicly, because everybody continues to talk about our audit. And I just want it made clear that we have resolved that, and I think we're down to one or two. Dr. Atkins, or is Susan Malay here? I couldn't remember if this was the second of three or the first of three, that they've said they've kissed it all off and whatever. Are we only left with the impact fee criticism?
No, I think, I think the last time I looked at it, there were several items that we had submitted information, we had not, yeah, we had not received back from them. The impact fee was the one where I knew there was some outstanding stuff. We're still waiting. And in fact, they had just recently communicated with us again about the impact fee, so we had submitted some stuff, I believe, last week. And then the indoor equality was the one that, you know, the three additional ones that was outstanding that we were able to meet. So, you know, the rest of like the 12, or how many there were, there's kind of various stages. Some of them, we've never received any guidance whatsoever. Others, we've submitted and haven't heard back.
Is there any effort amongst superintendents to, or school board's attorneys, to talk about this issue of impact fees and how it's accounted for going forward?
Yes, it is a concern. It's one of the advantages of us retaining Bob Gang, because he's actually working with several of these, several of these school districts that have a similar, in fact, I just saw, I can't remember which one it was.
I know, I can't either.
I want to say, I don't want to misspeak, but it's one of the larger districts, like Broward, Palm Beach, or Miami-Dade, that had a similar finding in their audit that was actually larger than ours.
Okay. Those are my comments. Thank you. I have no comments. Attorney Dodig, do you have any?
No.
Dr. Atkins?
Unfortunately, I have several just updates I want to provide you, or not unfortunately, but the information that I wanted to get back to you. One, been a lot of concern and discussion relative to the DRA allocation, so I wanted to update you regarding our efforts there. We did release that last week. We were hoping to do it on Friday, but they needed to continue to work on the file, so that was released on Monday. We met with principals on Thursday, and this is an important piece of the step, because that's where we started to hear back from them, feedback. So we met with the high school and middle school principals in the morning. I think Ms. Fisher was there. And then we had elementary principals in the afternoon. Very good discussion. I think that went a long way to kind of alleviate what some of those concerns were. One of the things that we discovered, there was a problem with the high school file, which led to some significant problems with the flex spending portion, which means they were, they would put their allocation in, and they would come up far short. So that led to some of the issues that you all have heard about. We also, as a part of this process, that's, the first step is when you get that allocation released, and then you start to work with individual schools relative to their needs. The problem that we did have is we had some communication that went out on social media you're all aware of, that was premature, in my opinion, and unfortunately, did create some concerns. You know, we have addressed that. You know, imagine yourself, if you're a first-year principal or teacher, and then you get an email from your principal. So one of the coaching that we did on our meetings on Thursday was to talk about, you know, these are critical meetings that you want to have face-to-face. And I told them my own personal story, and that was one where, you know, my school closed as, when I was a second-year teacher. And when my school closed, there was no surplus list, I had no job, I was out there. But I had had discussions with my principal and with my assistant principal, and they had connected me with another principal. So I was reassured by them, and I want, I expect that same type of reassurance out of our schools. So with that, what we did have occur district-wide, we had the $5.2 million reduction in the DRAs as a part of the $22.7 million money that we had set aside for compensation. So we had been working with principals, as you know, to set those formulas, staffing ratios, which does, does impact teacher-to-student ratios and AP ratios and other things in schools. But it really isn't significant when you start to work through the process. Unfortunately, that is not always what gets communicated out there, so we're doing a lot of trying to communicate to overcome some of the misinformation that's out there. However, you know, I do want to stress to everyone that there are schools that are losing positions, and there are schools that are gaining positions, and that's important to keep in mind. And then also, what's very, very important to keep in mind is that we have been looking at our data for staffing on teachers since 2005, and that data consistently reports 500 or more teachers every single year hired. So if there's not a position here, there is going to be a position over there for effective and highly effective teachers, and we also feel that's going to be the case for the majority of our effective and highly effective employees in other, in other positions. So when it comes to assistant principals, there's been some discussion around assistant principals. We do have a small number of assistant principals district-wide that are literally being reduced because of the budget, but we also have to bear in mind that there are other assistant principals that they're having discussions relative to performance, that have nothing to do with the budget process, so that's happening as well. And, and so human resources, working with every one of those principal, or assistant principal groups, whether there's someone displaced through the budget process, someone who's displaced through the, you know, through the performance process, or schools that are looking to add assistant principals, so that we can make those placements first out of that particular pool, or set up plans for those individuals if performance is an issue. So all of that stuff is things that we are communicating. I think it's important for everyone to keep in mind that while we did have DR revisions this year, which did impact this, we also have this reshuffling every single year. So the difference this year is you have a revision in the allocation formula, which means literally rebuilding of the files. But that's new. What's not new is that we're faced with a very tight staffing guideline, and the time where people are being notified about decisions for next year. And with that, of course, goes some angst. So we're trying to work, again, with our budget department. There was a, some communication I saw from one of our larger high schools that was a concern, but, you know, initially, over the weekend, and our budget department, by the way, worked through the weekend, every day. You know, when I went down to see Kelly yesterday. through the weekend, every day, you know, when I went down to see Kelly yesterday, just to get an update, you know, looks real tired because she's been working real hard. But they are committed to go through these file-by-file and make sure that every school has what it needs, and then human resources is working, you know, very carefully with all of our employees to make sure their needs are met. You know, it's wonderful, on the one hand, to be part of a growing organization, because that allows us to provide opportunity for our staffs when we do have to do this type of reshuffling. We did not anticipate the level to which this would cause angst, because we didn't understand that that file was going to be as off as it was. And there was one where they were, actually could input, and they would, it would add units, so that was another Excel FOPA that occurred. But that has since been corrected, they've been working real hard, and we will continue to keep you informed. I would just say, you know, ask the questions, we'll keep you posted, but there is a lot of misinformation and rumor that's out there. And so I just would encourage us to all be patient, we, patient, we will work through this. One of the things that was pushing this issue is we have a recruitment fair this weekend, and we have staffing guidelines and requirements that were pushing them. They felt pushed to make decisions too quickly. Dr. Pruitt extended their staffing timeline by, I think, a week, and again, continues to work with them. So we do have positions that are out there being advertised, we have to keep that in mind. We have a recruitment fair, we will be hiring, and we will need high-quality staff moving forward. Speaking to another piece of where we've got a lot of information and misinformation out there is around the tentative agreement. So, you know, when you're talking to teachers about the tentative agreement and what the raise is, what they think it is, you know, there's a lot of information out there that's just simply not correct, that's being passed on. So staff, in order to try to help assist, has produced a number of little short videos that are being provided to teachers. I've also got a video that was provided to schools to help, and that is an effort to put out, you know, really good information relative to that agreement, because I think it's important, and everybody knows what's in their contract, and what's, you know, what's being voted on. So that is something we have done in the past. We put these little cartoon videos out that say, you know, I'm a highly effective teacher, and what the raise will be, and so forth. Last thing, we have John Pratt down in almost the front row. He is working with our operations division during this transition period. He is, I met with him today, and we meet periodically, but just give me an update. He has been reviewing our organizational structure, our leadership model. He's been looking at, he's been touring departments, he's been looking at other districts around the state, including some other top districts in other states where you have high growth. And, you know, so he's advising us there. He's also been meeting with different candidates for positions. He's also been meeting with staff, so that he can also make some recommendations. And then I think his organization is going to certainly be a benefit when we go looking for a chief operations officer. So if you get a chance to, you know, get down and meet him, or I will also, we'll make, we'll make ourselves available in the coming days, because I, you know, I'd like for each one of you to know who he is, but also talk to him about what he's doing for our organization as we're working on restructuring our operations division. And that's it for my comments. Thank you.
Okay, next item is good of the order. Ms. Giavanelle?
So I sent everybody the article, and Chris, you had made a comment in there, and I was just concerned how we're going to work going forward, how we're going to work with the commission and decide, because they're wanting to take some of our money, so the half-cent sales tax. So I was concerned, because y'all worked very hard for that, and to see it slip away, and I'm concerned. And if we're going to work with this, you know, I wanted to know what the others thought about it, and how we can work with the commission, or at least have a conversation with them, and to move forward, and to see what their expectations are, and I know what ours are, but.
Well, since you said my name, I'll start by saying that the law does not permit what the county commission is suggesting. And one of our jobs, I think, as a district, is to help the public understand how we're funded. The county is not funded the way we are funded. The county can set their own mileage rate, the county can move money from one fund to another, and the county has made no promises to the public with regard to an additional source of revenue. So I really think it's just a matter of staff communicating with staff, so that they understand where we stand and what's going on. Dr. Atkins, you want to add to that?
Well, my, that was one of the questions that I wanted to bring up, you know, maybe he could just have, you know, write a letter to the, to the, to the, to the, and just, you know, just kind of open that conversation up, you know, at least extend that olive branch, really.
Actually, I have the opportunity tomorrow to meet with the county on a different issue, and so we felt this would probably come up, so I was going to hope, hopefully, take advantage of that opportunity and talk to them about the difference between capital and operational funding relative to the school district, and how their required local effort is different in terms of the way it's set versus ours. As you know, ours is set by the legislators, and the, and we don't always, like in the last two years, we do not have the opportunity to increase that budget based on the rollback rate. And so as a result, the rollback rate has, actually took us, we went beyond the rollback rate the last two years, which means that our property values, we weren't able to recapture the increase in property values into our operating fund, and I'll talk to them about that, because they were the one that suggested that we implement the growth increment model, which they use, and their growth increment model allows them to use the rise in property values and their required local effort, or that what they said is their required local effort, they can capture some of those dollars from the increase in property values and funnel them off to the capital budget. So that's what they were doing. They suggested we do that here. We tried a model with FTE, and that has since been returned back to our operational budget to the tune of about $4 million. But anyway, I have a meeting with them tomorrow to discuss. First, I'm going over to talk with the city of Cape Coral on the school bus stop. That's a group meeting for stakeholders with, as it relates to our school bus stops in Cape Coral, but also we're trying to expand that, because he's invited, I think Roger DeJolay and others to that meeting. And then afterwards, I believe Scott's going over there with me, and we're going to talk about the design for a shelter for MMM High School, because we're going back and forth about funding on that, too. Scott can, he can give you a better explanation, but as I understand it, what, eight, you know, the wind speed, eighty-five versus ninety-five, and-
Eighty-five.
Are they pushing-
Five versus-
Are they pushing back on paying for it?
Well, when I read that article, that's what I thought, well-played, sir. You know, we have $1.6 million in what we've designed for ICC 500 for high school MMM as a shelter. Never been able to get a definitive answer as to who is going to pay, at least at my level. So that prompted me to ask the superintendent to send a letter, which he did, inviting Mr. DeJolay, his staff, and our staff to discuss it. It not only was for MMM, it was also going to be to discuss the future MM Middle School out in that zone for the needed seats as well. Capital is a word that you see in many things, but it doesn't say whose capital provides the funding for shelter. I do know in the, in the information that was released and provided by the state for shelters, it requested each county to submit their needs for shelter, for capital. And I, from what I can see, from what I'm reading, what we submitted as a county was very minimal.
Right.
Mostly just generators, whereas some of the other counties put in for facility. So I think it was, when I saw the issue on our SRO officers and so forth, and we'll see tomorrow.
Well, I have a question. One of the things that they're, that they're talking about in Tallahassee is capital. And do we have to build every school to be up to hurricane? I don't know what I'm cutting.
Again, I don't want to speak for statute, but what we shared with Mr. Dotick, helped myself and Mr. Moore at the time when we were reviewing it, we shall engage with the community to provide shelter space in those areas where shelter is needed. We shall.
Shall.
Now, the funding in the past has always been by the county, 100%, for as long as I've been here. Island Coast and Harons Marsh Middle School is also a shelter. It was pretty obvious that the funds were tight, and that's never been answered at my level, and we're hoping to get some answers tomorrow, and it just seems a little coincidental that some of these financial issues are now coming, you know, just days ahead of the meeting.
But we shall provide. Don't we already have sufficient buildings to cover the population?
I believe there's a report that was issued, and Scott knows this, as, when we got into this issue, that indicated that this county has a deficit in shelter space.
Right.
Right, and that's listed in the report. Don't hold me to this number, but I want to say it's like 30,000 spots. So when we had that event last year, you actually opened up buildings that weren't required to be shelters structurally, but you had to have someplace to put the people, so.
Right. What I think the public doesn't understand, or doesn't grasp, or comprehend, or appreciate is that it's really just two pockets of the same pair of pants, right? I mean, we're paying taxes for a shelter, regardless of whether the county pays for it or we pay for it. The problem for us is we have to compromise educational facilities for students and/or services in education, because we can't raise our mileage rate. They can raise their mileage rate.
You lost your mileage rate, you lost your PICO funds, you've lost a bulk of the percentage of the impact fee money for 10 years now.
We county's going to pay for it. They're either going to pay for it through an increase in our county taxes, or they're going to pay for it through a decrease in educational services. So I don't understand, I don't get how this is even a conversation, to be honest with you. This, shelters is not an educational function. Didn't we have this conversation on Monday? SROs is not an educational function. Why are we paying for this stuff? My question is, why do we have to do it? Well, shall. The language says shall, the-
I think it's a-
At whose-
Expense.
At, no, at whose direction? I mean, the county shall. Have they in turn delegated us as the provider?
Well, that's why I think the conversation has to happen. He's doing it, so I think, thank you.
I mean, that's-
You're welcome.
Okay.
We, yeah, hopefully this will be a first step. I mean, we want to work on this hopefully collaboratively, just like we do with the SRO issue, so we thought we'd reach out and make this meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, this has been a lot of fun. Is there anything else, anybody else wants to add to today's meeting? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
It's a good to do-